Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll? Please to establish quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Tao, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. Through the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Mido Valley and Plains Miwok, the Wen-to peoples, and the people of the Wauten Maturiya, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Tao. Good afternoon, everyone, colleagues, members of the city staff, members of the public in the audience and those watching from other places. We have two important items here this afternoon. And let us get right to it. Number one is the proposal for a cannabis social consumption pilot program. And let us begin with a staff presentation. We'll then take public testimony, of which I think it's extensive. I know the city clerk is counting.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. And then we will have a discussion, a debate, and maybe some action by the city council. All right? Please.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Fiona Metz, and I'm the program specialist for the Office of Cannabis Management. I have a brief presentation as council considers establishing a pilot program to permit cannabis social consumption lounges. This is an abbreviated timeline with some key meeting dates of the development of the pilot, the pilot social consumption proposal. Staff engaged the community and other jurisdictions to gauge community preferences and best practices and work through the Law and Legislation Committee to develop this proposal. On September 17th, the Law and Legislation Committee advanced the pilot program to council with the direction that staff have a public health expert present to the full council about statewide cannabis health impacts prior to council considering the pilot program. On October 22nd, council heard from doctors Ryman and Schick. Staff is proposing two permit add-on types: Type 1, ingestibles only, and Type 2, inhalable and ingestibles. The permit add-ons will only be available to a permitted storefront dispensary, and Type 2 permits will need to meet additional ventilation requirements. Staff is recommending a five-year pilot program to enable the city to evaluate the impacts of social consumption, including the impacts on the local cannabis industry and surrounding businesses, public safety, and transportation. The goal of the pilot program is to provide permitted places for people to consume cannabis in a way that does not impact the non-cannabis-consuming public and is away from those who are Health and safety standards for social consumption of cannabis have minimum standards set by state law. Some of the key state standards restrict where social consumption can occur, gives rights to employees to use PPE, and requires employers to provide California Department of Public Health information to employees. In addition to the state requirements, we have added local health and safety mandates. Any smoking lounges or Type 2 permits must meet additional ventilation standards. Consumption lounges must submit an operations plan, which will outline timing and dosage limitations for patrons, time in lounge, time in lounge for employees, what PPE will be available for employees, and other operational information. We are also requiring lounges to develop plans to prevent impaired driving. In response to the presentations by doctors Ryman and Schick, the city will also require all consumption lounges to display a health warning with standards and location to be determined by the city. Should council approve the proposed ordinance today, the city will need to do the following to implement the pilot program: Complete a fee study, which can be included in the comprehensive cannabis fee study, and a resolution will be brought back to council for consideration. Solicite and implement a request for proposal for an education outreach campaign to engage the public on cannabis safe use. Additionally, the program will include a harm reduction model for youth 21 to 25 years of ages, and will provide education materials and signage on how to reduce or responsibly use cannabis. Furthermore, the Planning Division is preparing a draft ordinance relating to Title 17 Cannabis Zone amendments for all cannabis land uses. The public review process of the draft ordinance is anticipated to begin in January 2025. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I'm sure there are going to be a lot of questions. I know I have a number of them, but I think protocol and our tradition here, let's hear from 37 members of the public, and then we'll turn it back to the city council. Excuse me? Okay. Two minutes, two minutes each?
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to read off a few names, so please feel free to line up in the middle aisle so that we can expedite the process. First is Don Whitney, Nick Karas, Maisha Bahati, Christine Trimble, Donald Lyman. Please proceed. Don Whitney.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm here to thank Councilman Guerrero for opposing this proposed study. I live in 12th Avenue. I understand pot is legal, and it does have legitimate medicinal uses, but it should not necessarily be a storefront lounge. Alcohol is legal. I certainly don't want a liquor store at the end of my block. There was a pot fusion facility at the end of my block for several years. It was surrounded by garbage. There were needles at times, and there were men that seemed to be unhoused but maybe had up to other nefarious activities. It was great when it was gone. If, if this does go forward, let me say, I'm a nimby. I don't want the thing in my neighborhood. And I assume I'll have a chance to object if this thing does go forward. I think we all acknowledge that if it's inhaled, it smells and produces secondhand smoke. That can be mitigated. I understand that's the idea, but it can't be eliminated, so I don't know why we're doing it in the first place. I understand people want to use it recreationally. I just think it should be in their own homes. It's going well so far. And there's often a misunderstanding, in my opinion, that medical use means it's okay. That, that just means it's okay for a specific medical condition. There are, it doesn't mean it's healthy for somebody without that condition. There's morphine, to use, an extreme, is, is great if you're suffering from lots of pain. Don't use it if you're not. It's, it is a naturally occurring substance, but there are a lot of naturally occurring substances that are poisonous. And I think that California's kind of gotten away with, gotten away from those, those notions. And lastly, the THC cannot be measured. When I was in dazed and confused high school, it was a lot of fun. We giggled and ate a lot of Doritos, and that's not true.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Nick Karas.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor, I'd like to express my support for the cannabis lounge. I'd like to express how happy I am to be here in this epoch of time where we can unburden ourselves from what has been. I'd like to thank the council for having the guts to pass the core program. It's been a pleasure for me and my family to see this go forward. I think it's a great thing that we've all come together to realize that we can do many things. We can allow, now, it is different. We can allow a casino for cigarette smoke. They passed the laws. We're talking about compliance here. All we're talking about is letting people enjoy themselves. I was fortunate in my life to be friends with Mr. Russ Solomon. He was a great person. And one thing that he said to me, which was remarkable, he said, "I got lucky in my life. I was able to sell something that made people happy." And that's what I think here, is we're talking about people enjoying themselves. I'd like to express my personal thanks to Ms. Valenzuela for helping us move forward. I truly think that this is the right thing to do. We are here. I know time is short. I know you're, you're leaving soon, Mayor Steinberg. I hope you would consider this, and I know there's some opposition. I know there's some opposition from District 6.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Maisha Bahati.
I appreciate your time.
Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Maisha Bahati. Calling Maisha is Christine Trimble, then David Lyman.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Maisha Bahati. I am the CEO of Crystal Nugs, the first Black woman-owned dispensary here in Sacramento. Mayor Steinberg, I had the privilege of meeting you back in 2019 when you intended the core graduation for the first cohort class at the Greater Sacramento Urban League. When you all approved core to become a permanent program, you gave me the hope that I would have an opportunity to succeed in this industry. Well, the opportunity is now. This is the opportunity to take a business like mine, someone who has broken barriers to get to this point, and move me to the forefront of this new industry. Our city is evolving to this amazing destination. We're getting hotels, we're getting sports teams, we're getting a revitalized waterfront. Sacramento made history by allowing consumption at the fair this year. We're rezoning and adding more storefront dispensaries, allowing more people to purchase cannabis, but yet we're hesitant on opening a pilot program for onsite consumption? Don't you want the cannabis industry to align with the city's growth? We contribute 40% of our tax dollars to Measure L. That means you're relying on our success to fund that program. You've invested in me as a core business, and I've worked very hard to make a return on that investment. So why would you not push me to the next level as a core business? I hear the concerns of secondhand smoke, but the logic just doesn't hold for me. Because cannabis is so horrible, why is it medicinal? If cannabis smoke in a regulated room where there's ventilation and there's safety requirements, if that's so harmful, why do we tolerate children being in homes where people are consuming smoke? Why do we tolerate that? Let's work in partnership.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Christine Trimble, then David.
Testing. Hi. I am here today asking for offsite consumption. I've been coming here for the last few meetings, fighting for this, and we keep getting shut down on the subject, including being told, "Why don't we just open fentanyl lounges?" I'm sorry, but there is no comparison. Although on the times that I'm outside with my cannabis walking, we passed City Hall, and I guess it's against the law to smoke fentanyl or to shoot up drugs in front of the City Hall, because you see it every day. One of the things that your council keeps bringing up is secondhand smoke. In the time I'm outside trying to enjoy my medicine, I probably passed 20 people smoking cigarettes and blowing it my way. Now, that is secondhand smoke. But it is not allowed to smoke, but is, is not outlawed to smoke a cigarette, but it is against the rules of smoke cannabis. Go figure. I will continue fighting for the lounges. This won't be the last time that I'm here, I'm sure. Thank you.
Next speaker is Donald Lyman, then Kimberly Baskin-Lee, then Adola.
Hello, I'm Dr. Donald Lyman. I'm a part of the Sacramento Sierra Medical Society, and I'm here to represent the physicians of this community, mostly the city of Sacramento. We are opposed to this ordinance and urge you to vote against it. We, when, when I worked for the state, I ran both the tobacco control program and I was the proponent for Prop 64. This audience will be happy to know I authored it. That's why you're here.
You need to speak to the council, please.
I authored Prop 64. That's why these people are here. We enjoy that. I remember at the end of the last century, we had a problem with tobacco smoke in bars. We went out to do a video with a woman who worked there, and as the video shows her coming up toward the camera through a smoke-filled room, she comes up to the microphone, she looks, the camera, she looks straight into it and says, "I work here, eight-hour shifts, and five days a week. And after each month or so, I have inhaled the equivalent of a carton of cigarettes." We don't want to go back to the smoke-filled rooms with employees and other people who come in and are exposed to stuff they're not supposed to be exposed to. Cannabis regulation follows the same path as tobacco control, and being primarily a social marketing effort strongly tied to rules of discipline and often mandatory group behaviors. That means no smoking in most communal gatherings where non-smokers are likely to be present.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Kimberly Baskin-Lee, then Adola Adepe.
Good afternoon, Kimberly Baskin-Lee. I'm a resident of District 7, and I come to you as a resident. I am opposed of this ordinance for the lung health of the community. However, I'm not opposed to decriminalization of marijuana cannabis. I'm opposing this ordinance because of the dangers of secondhand smoke exposure in, in the lounges. If you allow this ordinance to pass with smoking in lounges, you'll be subjecting patrons and employees to the dangers of the smoke. Why is this product's smoke so different than other smoke? And why would we segregate cannabis smokers from tobacco smokers? We don't allow tobacco and vape lounges. We have laws to check before we burn, because that protects us from wood smoke. We have laws of not smoking tobacco and vapes in public spaces. Marijuana smoke is no different. Cannabis can be chewed or drank. It does not need to be smoked for medical or medicinal purposes. Smoke is smoke. It doesn't matter if it comes from wood, tobacco, cannabis, cloves. The science is clear. It's the smoke from anything that is burned that harms the users and bystanders. That's why we pass smoke-free laws. I was a part of this work in the late 90s with some of you on this council, before, when we worked together at the County Public Health Department, when we worked at Breathe California, when we did sessions at the legislature. This is still a smoke issue. Smoke is smoke, and the public should be protected from cannabis smoke, just like from wood smoke, just like from tobacco smoke. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Adola, and then Kimberly Cargile, then Deanna Garcia.
Good evening, council. I just want to say thank you for allowing me the space to speak on the behalf of Cannabis Consumption Lounge. I am in approval of this bill. I am here as a parent, and I'm also here as a cannabis legal operator and manufacturer. As a parent, I would like to see more safe spaces, safer access for parents as they are smoking in their homes around their children. I just witnessed going out to lunch, people engaging in a nice alcoholic beverage that is very close to the streets. And as a parent and a cannabis operator, it is very disheartening that I continue to feel like we are the cockroaches of every industry. We pay our taxes. We are professionals. We're educated, but we continue to have to address or feel this issue of the stigma with cannabis. I am here as a parent. My child was diagnosed with T-cell leukemia and given three days to live, and I was very conservative on cannabis prior to this. I will, I'm here to say that with cannabis and chemotherapy, my son, who was two, is now 10 years old, and he is a cannabis, he is a cancer survivor, and I believe that cannabis was very medicinal in his treatment. So I'm here advocating for a safe place, for a place for people to consume. If you Google, there are nine different cigar lounges within a four-mile radius from here who are operating and who are able to smoke and consume and be able to run a business. But we continue to fight. And so I'm here to fight as a taxpayer, that we are just here to basically, just to be seen as equality, right? You're owning a business, we're paying our taxes. This is an opportunity for us to be treated like everyone else, and we want to work with you. We want to compromise. We want to be a part of the pilot program, but I want to eliminate all the red tape and the red barriers that continue to make it hard for us to survive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, staff, council, and mayor. My name is Kimberly Cargile. I have been operating storefront cannabis dispensaries here in Sacramento for 17 years now. I have been the CEO of a therapeutic alternative in East Sacramento since 2013. ATA is unique in that it is specifically tailored for medical patients and seniors. I am here today to ask for a change to the ordinance. At the last city council meeting on this item, I explained that I am looking forward to providing a beautiful healing garden in the backyard of my dispensary to provide teas and tinctures like this one that I accidentally just took in council. I'm sorry. I needed it. I'm so sorry. And I'm not proposing smoking outside. I'm proposing the grandmothers coming together and having tea, or us doing yoga or massage, like this beautiful healing garden with lots of beautiful flowers and fountains and tinctures and teas. That's it. Maybe some massage lotion with cannabis in it. I didn't hurt anyone today in the council's chambers by taking my tincture, and my patients will not be hurting anybody in the backyard that is completely off the street by taking their tinctures and their medicine. I'm proposing this, and I'm just saying that, just like the last person said, you can drink alcohol directly adjacent to the street, to the sidewalk, and nobody says anything. All over town, there's a place to drink alcohol next to the sidewalk almost in every corner. I am asking to be hidden away in the back, fully enclosed within a fence, and not to be viewable by the, by anyone from the street. My patients have been good patients in East Sacramento for many, many years now. We've had no incidents. If you do not let me get licensed, there will not be any safe place in East Sacramento for patients to use cannabis. We only have 40 people who are going to be able to go for these licenses as it is in this very large city.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Deanna Garcia.
Good afternoon. I'm very proud to be up here in front of you today. It's been a long road that got us here, and I thank each and every one of you for all your hard work and dedication that you have put forward in bringing this pilot program to the city of Sacramento. I am also a core member, so it's very nostalgic to, to be here. We've broken so many glass ceilings in the last two or three years here in the city of Sacramento. I understand that an ordinance is very hard to amend once an ordinance is set in stone and in writing, and so I ask you today to make very good judgments and allow both of the pilot programs to move forward and to, to allow this pilot program to become its fullest, that it, that it can show the city of Sacramento, and then it can be a pilot program for other cities and other counties, that consuming cannabis is not dangerous, it's safe, and it's healthy, and that consuming secondhand smoke, like everyone's been speaking about today, is a cure for, for symptoms, not a cause of symptoms. I would also like to ask about the outdoor consumption lounge to, to be permitted, and I would ask that we allow outside consumption lounges for the fact that you need vitamin D, you need sunlight, you don't need to be inside in, in fluorescent lighting all the time, but you need to be outside, you need fresh air, you, they put these ordinance, the ordinance that is written as it's written right now, has speaking about how long staff can be in the room, and, and there's guidelines already in the ordinance to, to protect the staff, and I thank you for your time. I see my time's up.
Your comments. Kathy Battaway, Chris Chilton. Next speaker is Kathy Battaway, then Chris Chilton, Yasenia Marquez, Regina Mary, Mindy Galloway, Cassandra Fingold.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathleen Battaway. I go to alternative treatment. I'm also from District 6, and I would really love to have the outdoor garden for the massages, for the tea, and also for the fresh air, which we all need. I truly believe that being a patient there for several years now, that it's only helped me. I have arthritis in my wrist and in my right knee and my lower back, and if it wasn't for the consumption, I don't know what I would be doing right now. I'm also 81 years old, and, and I feel great, you know, and I, and I contributed to God and also for the cannabis that you've allowed us to use, and I thank you.
Chilton. Thank you for sharing your, your secret to a rejuvenated life. That's wonderful. You look great. Chris Chilton.
Good afternoon, council. In California, obtaining an MMIC or Medical Marijuana Identification Card is a rigorous process. Patients must visit the Department of Public Health, meet with a state-licensed physician, and be approved by the state to use cannabis as medicine. Today, there are about 3,200 MMIC members in California, individuals whose doctors have put their license on the line to affirm that cannabis is essential for their comfort, the quality of life, upholding their rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Yet, half of these patients in the state's capital have nowhere legal to consume their medicine. Safe consumption lounges are vital, not just as places to medicate, but also as spaces for education, community, and support. Dreamland, a concert and music festival, provided a safe, controlled environment for all types of cannabis consumption, including smoking, vaping, and edibles. By working closely with the DCC and state authorities, the event demonstrated that Type 2 lounges can operate responsibly with thousands of attendees, over eight hours, no medical incidents, fight, or police involvement. Across hundreds of similar events, data consistently shows that safe consumption practices work. Airbox data has proven that secondhand smoke levels remain well within California safety standards. Establishing safe consumption lounges is the logical next step, but this must include Type 2 lounge, lounges, spaces where smoking, not just edibles, is allowed. For many patients, smoking or vaping is the preferred or most effective method of medicating. These lounges would ensure that all patients have access to a legal, secure, and supportive environment where they can medicate responsibly. They represent an opportunity to continue building trust and providing much-needed resources for the cannabis community. Thank you.
Comments? Yasenia? Yasenia?
Hi. My name is Yasenia Marquez, and I'm certified in cannabis health care and medicine through the University of San Diego, and in the spring, I will obtain my master's in exercise science test from Sac State. I have dedicated my studies into researching human physiology, specifically exercise and the endocannabinoid system. As you've heard, there are various methods of consumption: inhalation, whether it's smoking or vaporization, submucosal through tinctures, transdermal with topicals, and ingestibles such as edibles. All of these have different physiological metabolic pathways of ingestion and processing for medicinal benefits. I recognize my privileged position in pursuing a higher education on these topics, which is why I'm here to offer and collaborate in support of solutions for cannabis consumption lounges, such as educational workshops that share these informations of the various metabolic pathways. The California State Fair was the first in the nation to allow regulated onsite sales and consumptions this past summer. I worked 14 of those 16 days in the summer at the cannabis exhibition. My fellow bartenders and I had an amazing time, and despite the 11-day of a triple-digit heat wave, I believe it was a success, and the feedback was very impactful. We had grandparents ecstatic that for the first time, they could enjoy the long days at the fair with their families without having to leave midday. I, they had a safe space to medicate. We had people that do not consume that were fascinated to learn the history and scientific information on the walls with questions eager to be asked. They had a safe space to learn. The normalization of cannabis is a multifaceted issue that has profound implications on health, society, and the economy. By embracing normalization, communities can move forward towards sensible drug policies, promote social equity, and harness the benefits The normalization of cannabis is a multifaceted issue that has profound implications on health, society, and the economy. By embracing normalization, communities can move forward towards sensible drug policies, promote social equity, and harness the benefits that cannabis has to offer. Thank you.
Comments. Regina. Regina.
I am standing in support of consumption lounges and in the type of actual smoking instead of just edibles. I myself cannot consume edibles or tinctures as they do not go well with the medicinal reasons why I consume cannabis. I was going to speak on the incandescent receptors that everybody is born with. So everybody has incandescent receptors in their body already. It's like our DNA. So we are all supposed to have cannabis in our system in one way or another. I know that is in regards of secondhand smoke, and everybody's worried about that, but we're already supposed to have cannabis in our system. We do not have a Xanax receptor. We do not have, you know, any other kind, an alcohol receptor to work with our body as well. We do have a cannabinoid one. So, in strong in support of consumption lounges, and especially everybody in the Corps who has been fighting. We all pay the taxes. We all make sure that this is legal and this is right. So, it's the right thing to do. And thank you for your time.
Comments. Mindy. Mindy.
All right. Good afternoon, mayor, council, and staff. My name is Mindy Galloway. I'm the CEO of The Pocket Dispensary and Camea Shared Manufacturing. I am also a core member. I have been a part of the cannabis industry for over 10 years and a license holder and owner for five. Out of my shared manufacturing, I've helped four core businesses fully secure their license and have three licenses of my own. This is seven out of the 42 core licenses that are in the city of Sacramento. I say this because I'm not new to industry change, growing, adapting, and understanding how to compliantly follow regulations. This is a pilot program, which means that we can work together to make the best decisions for public safety and public health concerns. Please give us a chance to show you how Sacramento can make it work, just like many other cities in the city, the state of California, which you guys have all done a lot of research off of as well. It is more concerning to have people smoke at home. At my dispensary, we'll have a controlled environment to mitigate smoke. We will have education on secondhand smoke so that people understand why not to smoke at home in their apartments. We want people to come to the lounge for safety. We will provide cannabis education and wellness to target specific dosages. I've seen so many people with chronic health conditions, with cancer, with medical conditions that have been helped by cannabis, and they're smoking cannabis. They are not, you know, they're doing everything. But 80% of the people that come into my spot smoke cannabis. This is a plant with no added chemicals. What is the difference between cannabis smoke and incense? A plant with no added chemicals. We need to find a place for people to smoke because they're going to do it anyway, and they're going to do it everywhere. I myself smoke cannabis every day, probably once to three times a day, and where am I supposed to smoke?
Cassandra Fingold, then Sean Raycraft.
Good afternoon, city council. I'm here today as a community member to express my strong support for cannabis lounges that permit onsite consumption. I have been an active participant in the cannabis industry as a cannabis consultant for over four years, and during this time, I have made it a priority to give back to my community. I assist individuals in managing chronic conditions, individuals dealing with radiation side effects, by providing valuable knowledge about safe cannabis use and its potential health benefits. A designated space for onsite consumption would offer great benefits to the city, particularly individuals who live in apartment buildings or households with families where smoking or consumption at home may not be an option. A cannabis lounge would provide a safe and welcoming environment for those who greatly benefit from responsible consumption. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Comments. Sean Raycraft, then Colin Brandt, then Ciara Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, council members, mayor. My name is Sean Raycraft. I am a union representative with USCW Local Late. We are, we're proud to represent thousands of cannabis workers throughout the state of California and the country. We are here today in strong support of the proposed pilot program. We think that it is a good opportunity for our members to work in a safe environment, and better opportunities for the public to consume cannabis in a safe environment as well. So, we are strong support. Thank you for your time.
Following Colin is Ciara Gonzalez, Justin Jacinto, Christian Abara.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Colin Brandt, and I'm here as a proud member of the Sacramento community, advocating for the pilot program to allow type-two cannabis consumption to safe spaces. I grew up deeply anti-drug, shaped by the pain of seeing my mother's battle with addiction and my brother's journey through rehab. For years, I equated all substances with destruction. That perspective was reinforced by my time in the US Army, where I served proudly until an injury left me medically retired and reliant on the VA's cocktail of pills. Then I was introduced to cannabis. Within six months, I had replaced the VA's multiple narcotics with cannabis, and my life was transformed. I'm now a husband, a father, and someone who believes deeply in building a healthier, safer community for everyone, including those who want to choose to consume responsibly. Today, I urge this council to see the importance of providing safe, regulated space for cannabis consumption. As a father, I understand the need to minimize secondhand smoke in the homes with children. That's exactly why consumption lounges make sense. They provide a safe space away from nonwilling participants to proper safeguards like age restrictions and air filtration systems. Let's also address the misplaced comparison between cannabis and more dangerous substances like fentanyl. It would be better to compare cannabis to hookah lounges, which there is no age limit to enter and only to consume, and there are several located just a few blocks from here. It is the same with the 50 breweries in Sacramento. Cannabis isn't a crisis. It's a solution for many, from veterans like myself to others seeking relief. It's time to move beyond the stigma. In fact, we already allow substances like alcohol and tobacco that are scientifically proven to be far more harmful with little to no such safeguards in place. Consumption lounges give us the opportunity to regulate, educate, and ensure safety. With your support, we can create a pilot program that prioritizes safety, innovation, and community well-being. We are in the front lines of history in the middle of this cannabis revolution. The question is, which side of that change will you stand on? Thank you.
Comments. Ciara.
Ciara Gonzalez from Getting It Right From the Start, a project of the Public Health Institute in opposition. Based on our project's cannabis policy tracking and research in California as of 2024, three quarters of the 195 jurisdictions that allow storefront retailers judiciously prohibited onsite consumption would strongly encourage Sacramento to join them in upholding decades of smoke-free air and worker protections that have been one of the greatest advances of public health in the last century. This proposal will undermine that progress. It inequitably puts employees and customers at an increased risk for heart disease, stroke, and other adverse effects. Workers shouldn't have to agree to breathe concentrated secondhand smoke in or vapor to keep their jobs or be employed. If a worker is a woman of reproductive age who becomes pregnant, so too will her child be exposed. The American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers states in their standards for ventilation for acceptable indoor air quality that there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. That cannabis smoke should not be allowed indoors, and that ventilation and other air refrigeration technologies cannot eliminate all the health risks caused by cannabis and other smoke. Even allowing just vaping products has little impact on the high particulate matter in such lounges. We need balanced objectives for our cannabis sector. Those should be to provide legal access to a safer product and end the illicit market while protecting youth, workers, and public health. It must also include not driving out consumptions with social normalization of smoking. Cannabis is a leading substance of abuse in our nation. It has become a growing contributor to serious mental illness, including psychosis and mood disorders. One in 10 young Americans is now using cannabis daily or near daily, triple that of daily use in the early 90s. Risk of developing cannabis use disorder doubled compared to 20 years ago, now reaching 20% to 25% of those who use cannabis. By 2022, for the first time, people who use cannabis daily surpass those using alcohol daily, and cannabis use during pregnancy has more than doubled. These striking trends signal a major and growing public health problem in almost all demographics. Opening onsite consumption lounges would advocate these trends. Lastly, allowing onsite consumption is not necessary to have a thriving legal cannabis retail sector in Sacramento. The city can help its cannabis retailers succeed by first not licensing too many retailers so that those which are licensed are not competing in a race to the bottom of low prices and aggressive advertising, by effectively enforcing against the illicit market, and third, by enforcing little intoxicating head
That is complete. Thank you for your comments.
Time's up.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Justin Jacinto, Christian Abara, Mac Schmidt.
Excuse me, excuse me one second. Excuse me one second. These are the rules of the chamber. This is a proud democratic institution, the city council here. Everyone is entitled to their opinion. Whether you agree with it or disagree with it, everyone who signs up will get their turn. So we ask that everyone please show respect to the speakers, no matter whether they agree or disagree with you. Thank you so much.
We would like all your speakers to stay seated as well and not leave, while all of our people are
Excuse me. No shouting out. No, no, wait a minute. You shout out again, I'm going to ask you to leave. That's not what you do. And whatever side you're on, you're not furthering your cause. So go ahead.
Justin Jacinto.
Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Justin Jacinto, and I'm a Core graduate. I'm extremely grateful for the city's piloting of the Core program and for continuing to help our community break the stigma. To start, if a carcinogen can be legally smoked in public, like what are we still doing here? There are bars and venues with outside designated smoke areas where secondhand smoke can travel, and these are, these areas exist all throughout the city. But we're trying to compare these controlled outside areas against actually controlled facilities that are designed with special ventilation to help navigate and mitigate the risk of the secondhand smoke concerns. And if you're still suspect of these ventilation systems, just simply not walk into the building, just as you wouldn't co-mingle in these outside smoking areas. As humans, we are social mammals, and we don't always want to drink and smoke at home. If these consumption lounges only consist of edibles, these business owners in the city will be losing out on a great deal of revenue because people aren't going to sit for 30 minutes to an hour and wait for their high to kick in, especially when there's no other combustible options. You're either informed and educated on the topic, or your pockets are aligned from opposing interests. I truly commend the support of the council who are looking to pilot this program, and I do appreciate the courage to do so by allowing a safe and accessible area for us to consume. Like Maisha said, safe consumption at the state fair proves that we can do this as long as we work together.
I have 22 more speakers. Christian Abara, Mac Schmidt, Marcos Sarita, Bruno Van Holland. Christian.
Hello, city council. I come here from District Three. I've worked in cannabis, and it's been my main source of income. And I have worked hand-in-hand with some of these pilot programs and have been around these consumption lounges and have seen that it is possible to have inhalable consumption and still have people conduct themselves correctly and not be a nuisance to the community, specifically with the ventilation situation. We've seen, as Chris had said, airbox data that shows that we can actually do this and not provide, you know, a space where workers are there and are being exposed to smoke unnecessarily. We already have places where you can smoke tobacco inside, as people have said, and I feel that we need inhalable consumption in particular because I have worked with edible companies in the past, and I know that education on edibles is important, and I think that dosage can be a little bit, you know, high for certain people. I think it is smarter to have inhalable consumption just purely because of dosage, because sometimes people can't handle an edible and go home afterwards. So I feel that type-two is a little bit more important, especially when people are maybe not as experienced users and are a little bit more casual. So I would like consumption lounges. I am in favor of that, and I think that we need type-two in particular because people need to be able to smoke. I am a renter, and I feel that I have pressure on me to not really smoke at my home, and I have had younger siblings as well that I do not want to smoke around at certain times. And I know there's people that have children and all the above. I do not drink as well, and I feel that it is important to have a safe space to inhale my cannabis. Thank you.
Mac Schmidt, then Marcos Sarita.
Hello, my name is Mac. I just want to say hello and hope we can come to a positive resolution on this decision regarding consumption lounges. I mainly want to address your secondhand smoke concerns. Let's just talk about the tobacco smoke lounges within Sacramento downtown area. When was the last time you guys have checked on their air purifier or checked they're mitigating their smoke, or the way they're mitigating their secondhand smoke? We have two known consumption tobacco lounges within Sacramento in the grid, one being Casbah, which is a hookah lounge. I don't know if you're familiar with hookah, but it contains high levels of carbon monoxide and fine particulate matter, which can exceed EPA quality standards, air quality standards. In fact, a study that found that carbon monoxide levels in rooms where shisha were smoked were five times higher than in rooms where cigarettes were smoked. In fact, hookah can also build up in indoor spaces as a thirdhand smoke, residuals on walls, furnitures, windows, and floors. And I could go on and on. Now let's just talk about the cigar lounges. Cigar smoke contains the same toxic chemicals as cigarette smoke, and there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Cigar smoke can also worsen lung cancer, heart disease, childhood asthma, ear infections, and upper and lower respiratory infections. Cigar smokers have four to 10 times higher risk of dying from oral, esophageal, or cancer than other nonsmokers. All in all, please think about what I have said regarding secondhand smoke. I think you guys should at least give us a chance to, and I can guarantee that the lounges will figure it out, and fast. I mean, we are the capital of California, and we should be leading the rest of California, not behind it.
Marcos, then Bruno Van Holland.
Hello, my name is Marcos Sarita. As a lifelong Sacramento resident and a cannabis business owner, I've seen firsthand how our city has embraced the cannabis industry. However, Sacramento late lacks safe designated spaces for consumption by creating cannabis lounges. We can ensure that consumption happens responsibly, reducing public use and impaired driving while fostering a sense of community. These spaces would also bring economic growth through tourism and local partnerships through other progressive cities like, or, other progressive cities like San Francisco and West Hollywood have successfully implemented lounges, showing it's possible to integrate them into the fabric of a city responsibly. Sacramento's rich cannabis culture deserves this step forward to enhance safety, equity, and economic growth. Sacramento has always been a trailblazer, and it's time we lead in providing a safe, inclusive spaces for cannabis users and enthusiasts. You know, we're in, basically, you know, the way I look at it is, there isn't really too many safe spaces for Californians and Sacramento residents, you know, people that come and visit us from all over the world. There are people out here, you know, looking at California, but not just California, but Sacramento, because Sacramento are, we are the, how would you say it? Like the trailblazers. We are the people that the world's watching to see what's next, what's going to happen with the cannabis industry, because like, I don't know how to explain it, but you know, it's to the fact where everybody's watching us, and we have to lead by example, you know? And I really appreciate you guys' time considering this, you know? Type-two consumption is something we really need, you know? You know, just along with number one, but number two is really what's important. Thank you for your consideration.
Bruno Van Holland, then Isaac Altamorano.
Hi, my name is Bruno. I didn't prepare any speeches, but I did want to say that I am in favor of the type-two consumption lounges. My job, I'm a professional joint roller, and I travel the world and talk to cannabis communities around the world, and we've all agreed that having a safe place to consume cannabis makes us not criminals. And I think that the people in this room are not criminals. I don't want to be treated like a criminal, and I think it's really messed up. You guys keep treating us like criminals and not giving us like a safe place to consume cannabis because it's just not fair. If we're not allowed to go someplace and smoke weed, where can we go and smoke? It's, it just doesn't seem right. I think that in other countries, like in Berlin or Spain, they seem to handle it very well. I've been to many of these, these social clubs, and I hear something about secondhand smoke, and the ventilation in these places is amazing. And so you could be sitting there, and the smoke just goes straight up. It's very impressive. You wouldn't have any problems with outside smoke because of the carbon filters that they're using. Other countries are, they seem to be like way ahead of us, and in California, I think that we're falling behind in that aspect. So yeah, I really hope that you guys pass these lounges so that we have a safe place to go and consume cannabis. I'm not a big fan of the bars and like people smoking cigarettes as I'm like walking down the sidewalk. So having a nice place to smoke cannabis would be great. Thank you for your time.
Isaac Altamorano, Flavio Oizar, Mira Altamorano, then Hazmee Hernandez.
Hi, mayor, council. How's everybody doing? Thank you staff for everything that you've done so far. We've heard a lot of different things opposing and in favor. I'm here to remind you that the city's growing. There's new developments coming, a lot of different things are happening that are big. And we don't want to be left behind. We, we want to be part of the economic development that this city is going, it's going to bring. And we keep getting pushed in a corner, like comparing scientifically tobacco and other substances to cannabis when it's simply not chemically not the same substance, not the same chemical components. And we reach out to you, Eric, and only we got a staff member that said that their email got stuck in their inbox on a Thursday night on a Monday. We have data from airbox. We did over 220 events here in downtown without any permits. We didn't, without any fights, without any arguments, without any incidents. And we have data to prove that the air can be cleaned up and it can be a better alternative. Lastly, it's just frustrating that the people that is opposed to this, it's people that is never going to be in these locations. And additionally to this, the people that is opposing to this, it's painting a reefer madness propaganda that in all reality is not what we're living right now. We have people that cannot smoke at home. I know you don't buy the argument, but it is true. There's people that cannot smoke at home. And if we provide an outlet for these people to smoke at home, I mean, sorry, in a location instead of at home, it's inclusive, inclusive for everybody. Once again, it's our plea, it's our livelihood. I represent a company that has been embedded in the fabric of the city and we really care for the, this to happen. So we will appreciate that and your support.
Thank you for your comments. Love you.
All right, guys, here we are again. So I represent my community, I represent myself and I represent my industry. I work at a local cannabis club and I sell tons of products. I sell tons of edibles, I sell tons of pre-rolls, I sell tons of flower, more like it. So the type one, it just doesn't work because there's just not enough people that are buying edibles that actually feel comfortable, like actually consuming onsite and staying there until the edible hits. So it just doesn't make sense for a type one. You know what I mean? Type two, it makes sense because everyone's consistently picking up flower, edibles, dabs. People are doing that consistently. So it just makes more sense for a type two. Now, we've already made it this far. We're almost there, we're almost at the finish line. I feel like if we have the type two, we will have the spaces, we will have the right technology, we will have the right people working these right spots so we can ensure quality, we can ensure safety, we can ensure outside smoke isn't getting leaked out. It's a pilot program, so we need it to actually try it so we can actually make sure that the data matches. We need to have these safe spaces so everyone's not just outside smoking. We need to have somewhere to smoke so I'm not just outside smoking wherever I want because I'm going to continue smoking wherever I want. And that's just how it is. That's how it's been. And until we actually have these safe spaces, people are going to continue to smoke wherever they want. Look how many people we have here today. You guys need to be able to let us smoke in a nice space where we can educate, where we feel safe and where we can leave and not worry about something happening. I appreciate you guys' time. I actually made this a lot faster than I planned it. But hopefully you guys get the point that, you know, all of us here, we're going to keep on, you know, being here until we actually see a positive result. So thank you guys, my name's Flavio.
Mira, then Hazmee.
Hello, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak here. I'm a mother of four children, believe it or not. I have a 20, 18 and 14 and a 13-year-old. They are educated because I educate them about cannabis. Why is that? Why can't I be the one educating it in my household and they are accepting it? How come you guys are not accepting the way that we bring you guys the knowledge and also all of the data behind all of the negative thoughts and comments that everybody have? Why can't we put that much effort on getting all of this right information for everybody to be on the same page, for us to move forward, for us to have businesses here? Mayor Steinberg, we want you to give us the opportunity to move forward with cannabis lounges. We want you to go up in history, to be the first one here in the Sacramento, in this capital, for you to have the opportunity to let us lead the business. We want this for everyone, for our community. We need the network. You guys need the education because obviously you guys are not allowing it and you're just allowing the negative thoughts, the negative outcomes of this industry when we supposed to be looking to the positive. We need to look into the education. And you, if you guys don't allow this, it's just going to be harmful for everyone and more bad things are just going to continue to come forward. We don't want that. We want to, people to move forward. Please give us the opportunity.
Hazmee Hernandez, then Chris Tao.
Good afternoon, my name is Hazmee Hernandez and I'm in support of the pilot program because like other parents, I would like a safe place to consume away from my child. I have four years of experience in the cannabis industry, which includes product development, where I focused on the science of how cannabis interacted with the brain in order to maximize targeted benefits. Our districts are home to numerous schools, but they're also home to bars, smoke shops, liquor stores, and they're located close to campuses. Through research, I estimated district six to have 11 locations, district eight to have 13 locations, two within a three-minute drive from Elk Grove High. District 12 had 18 locations, yet cannabis lounges, which provide a controlled and health-focused environment, face scrutiny. If we're comfortable allowing alcohol and tobacco sales near these schools, why are we so hesitant to establish regulated spaces for cannabis, a substance that no matter how consumed has proven medicinal benefits? Fear-based arguments often stem from outdated or irrelevant data and while secondhand smoke concerns are valid, cannabis is not tobacco. It should not be judged by tobacco and nicotine-driven studies. This is an opportunity to gather cannabis-specific data to provide accurate insights rather than relying on corrupted data and misconceptions in order to create a false equivalence. This pilot program can be the foundation for an academic partnership to be created with engineers and Sac State students pursuing environmental engineering where they can develop a system that filters PM 2.5 particles from industrial or vehicle emissions and natural resources. This could be a revolutionary, this could be revolutionary for buildings beyond cannabis lounges with systems that could be adapted in schools, housing units and other public spaces. I'm asking you all not to be limited by your fears but ignited by curiosity. This program is a chance to drive real progress for health and safety, but also innovation in Sacramento. It's an opportunity to approach cannabis in a way that we have never been able to do with alcohol, with intention, responsibility and community oversight. I challenge you all to think bigger, collaborate your strengths.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Chris Tao, then Javier Hernandez.
Thank you, mayor, council and staff for your time and service today. I'm a core business owner and a resident of district eight. My people in district eight do not own their own homes and many lease agreements prohibit the use of cannabis. This forces voters to normalize less than appropriate places to consume. You have a unique opportunity today to generate a new upward momentum for many in your community to build progress in the cannabis community and not hinder development. So let's break the stigma and pilot this program. Let's help educate the new wave of recreational users to consume safely. I support type two. Thank you.
Javier Hernandez, then Sherry Martinez, then Richard Miller.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Javier Hernandez and I'm here to support the passing of inhalable consumption lounges. From allowing medical dispensaries to playing a key role to allowing standalone delivery, Sacramento has always been a forefront of progress for many years, even before Prop 64 passed. Cannabis consumption lounges is the one area that we've fallen behind. OCM themselves has visited many cities like West Hollywood, Oakland and San Francisco, which all have provided frameworks that are proven to be workable and supported by the community with no major incidents to report. Even the consumption area, the state fair was enthusiastically received and went out, went out without incidents. All of these faces here, all of the people here, from OCM to the people that are speaking here today, are the people that have put in the years of thought, work and research into making this safe and successful for everyone. So let us be led by that, not by misinformation. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Just take a deep breath, wild. I fought for patients' rights. I've already been up here talking about this, Darryl, when you were in assembly. I believe I wrote you a letter with heart stickers and star stickers telling me that, telling you you were my hero. I believe it was the organ transplant bill that we were fighting for. And then we were coming here at city hall and fighting for more patients' rights. And so I've never been against patients' rights. And I see like we've been to the state fair before it was legal consumption and we were passing out study cases with procedures for patients' rights. And all of this information is already out there. It seems like we're going backwards. Patients need somewhere to access their medication, whether they're traveling two towns away, one town, a different state, wherever they end up going, they need to consume their medication. You take it on a broader range, now it's legal consumption for everyone. Okay, well, where are these people going to go? I think if you're going to be progressive and stay on this path, you need to move forward and do what's right. And these consumption stations, these places for consumption, type one and two are both necessary, not just for patients, but here you have people smoking it for their, smoking it or ingesting it, however they're taking it. And they need somewhere to go, like the alcohol bans. Now we have bars and, you know, same argument kind of keeps coming up and I don't think that it should be on the backs of patients because right now the patients are the ones really suffering. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. Richard Miller, on behalf of Americans for Safe Access and American Alliance for Medical Cannabis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and thank you for creating a robust cannabis program here in the city. However, this program does have its setbacks. And although it is robust, robust, many Americans do not have the ability to medicate and associate safely with our consumption lounges. I urge you to support the establishment of a cannabis consumption lounge here in the city, a step that will promote safely inclusivity and fairness. For far too long, cannabis has been stigmatized, leading to unnecessary discrimination against medical patients and consumers. Now with legalization, we must ensure cannabis users have the same opportunity to gather in a safe, regulated space as those who enjoy alcohol, bars, clubs, cigars and hookah lounges. These lounges not only provide a venue for responsible consumption, but they also provide an environment for education, social connection and cultural enrichment. Designated spaces keep cannabis use of public streets and neighborhoods, ensuring public safety while creating jobs, boosting tourism and creating generated tax for the city. These lounges can host events, workshops, entertainment, fostering community engagement and reinforcing responsible use. By allowing cannabis lounges, we treat consumers with dignity and respect and end the double standard. Everyone deserves a safe place to enjoy legal activities, free from judgment, misinformation and discrimination. Let us lead with fairness, innovation and equity, ensuring our city remains inclusive and forward-thinking. Thank you for the time and consideration. We respectfully ask for your support and vote aye on type one and type two cannabis consumption lounges. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Angelica Sanchez, then Chelsea Haskins, then Diana Heng.
Good afternoon, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Angelica Sanchez and I'm here representing Perfect Union. We've been a cannabis retailer in the city of Sacramento for the last 14 years and today we ask for your support in approving onsite consumption lounges, type one and type two. Sacramento's cannabis industry has grown significantly, but it lacks legal, regulated space for adults to consume cannabis safely and responsibly. It's illegal to use cannabis in public places and many consumers cannot smoke at home due to landlord policies. Without legal options, consumption is often pushed into unregulated areas, raising potential safety and community concerns. This proposal is not uncharted territory. Cities like San Francisco, Oakland and West Hollywood, as well as others, have successfully implemented onsite consumption lounges, demonstrating their ability to operate responsibly while bolstering local economies and creating jobs. These spaces attract cannabis tourism, support small businesses and contribute to tax revenues that strengthen our city services. The ordinance before you is the result of thoughtful planning. City staff and the law and legislation committee have spent countless hours researching and discussing best practices, consulting with other cities and addressing key concerns. Their work ensures this policy is comprehensive with safeguards that prioritize both community and worker safety. Concerns about air quality have been carefully addressed. The proposed lounges will require robust ventilation plans compliant with California mechanical code standards, including advanced HVAC systems and filtration measures to ensure clean air for both employees and customers. The United Food and Commercial Workers Union, representing thousands of cannabis workers across California, strongly supports onsite consumption. They played a pivotal role in passing AB 1775, which allows cannabis lounges to prepare food in controlled environments while ensuring worker and consumer safety. By supporting this ordinance, Sacramento can reinforce its role as a leader in progressive and equitable cannabis policy. Vote yes and give our community safe and regulated spaces it deserves. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Maple and council members. My name is Chelsea Haskins. I'm the Director of State and Local Licensing with Perfect Union and I'm here in support of type one and type two consumption lounges in Sacramento. Sacramento has been a leader in cannabis policy. The city has wholeheartedly embraced the economic benefits, collecting millions in cannabis tax revenue. However, Sacramento has failed to provide equitable access for all residents to safely and legally consume these cannabis products, especially those who are renters, living in apartments or otherwise lack private property for consumption or otherwise can't afford to own a home here. This is a glaring oversight. While the city profits from cannabis, it effectively excludes non-homeowners from consuming it legally. Renters are often prohibited from using cannabis in their leased homes and public consumption is outlawed. This leaves countless residents, including our medicinal patients, with no viable options to consume a product that is legally sanctioned and taxed under city and state law. The solution is simple: consumption lounges. These venues will create a safe and controlled environment for responsible use, alternatives to public or prohibited consumption. So this is going to reduce the likelihood of unregulated or unsafe use in spaces where it doesn't belong, such as parks or streets. And this is an economic opportunity, including job creation, business development and even more increased tax revenue for the city. I recognize that concerns may arise regarding health risks associated with smoke. However, the National Academy of Sciences and Engineering found there is no statistical association between cannabis and lung cancer. It's time to align our policies and values by embracing practical solutions that promote equity, safety and economic.
Thank you for your comments. I have eight more speakers, Diana, then Tiffany Burkett.
Hello, council. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you so much, Kaylee Valenzuela, for even getting us in this position today. Really appreciate you. I'm Dee. I am a core member and currently serve on the DCC's Cannabis Advisory Committee. I understand the health concerns and I agree, there are risks to smoke. Education is harm reduction. Studies have shown that tobacco smoke contains carcinogens and toxic compounds, particularly nitrosamines such as nicotine. These nitrogen-containing compounds produce highly toxic molecules that increase the risk of cancer and they are not present in cannabis smoke. Cannabis smoke does contain harmful compounds, including polyaromatic hydrocarbons, but those are also found in certain food preparation methods like grilling. Are you going to ban grills from restaurants? Are you going to ban hookah lounges, cigar lounges? While cannabis smoke may pose health risks, they do not contain the same high-risk carcinogens. Why do people prefer smoking cannabis? Studies have shown that cannabis has a bronchodilatory effect, which are currently available in inhalers, meaning that it can help meaning that it can help open up airways in the lungs, making it easier to breathe. Cannabinoids like THC and CBD reduce inflammation and relax the muscles around the airways, which help improve airflow. Cannabis can help calm the nervous system by promoting slower and deeper breaths, which can reduce anxiety and indirectly become pain and crisis management. In the last six years, I have lost my partner of 10 years, my pup of 15, and my father, all while living with a raging alcoholic. I cannot explain the unbearable pain that I endured when I woke up in the morning and I felt like I was living a nightmare. When you cry your heart out, it can be really hard to breathe. I needed something quick, something effective, and something that wasn't detrimental to my health, and that was cannabis. It healed me, and I found this community, and we found each other, and we want to help other people find that, too. Thank you.
Tiffany Burkett and Michaela Pearson.
Can I start? Thank you for letting me be here. As a female stigmatized in many forms as a woman, mother, entrepreneur, business owner, and healer, I am here to speak on behalf of my fellow community sisters facing mental health challenges and seeking alternative treatments and therapies, asking in support of type-two consumption lounges. Having a safe space to recommend to my clients where they can not only consume away from their homes and children, eliminating secondhand smoke, misinformation, and mental health concerns, and promoting a healthier outlet deferring PTSD, postpartum, social, mental anxieties, and depressions. Consumption lounges and consumption-friendly events can lead to resources and solutions within our community to those who need to medicate but can't simply smoke at home. The success of this pilot can lead into the direction of progress where I can eventually create my own safe space practice specializing holistic health medicine. When California passed Prop 215, I earned a degree in alternative medicine and am now working on my master's in transpersonal psychology. I made history at the state fair with opportunities you approved and the help of this community behind me. I'm a personal trainer and health coach. You mentioned secondhand smoke and its health effects. I consume personally smoking before, during, and after my three-hour-a-day workouts. I lift more than joints, I promise you. I'm the healthiest I've ever been in my life, and quote by my personal primary care physician, one of the healthiest people they have ever seen. Healthy lifestyle creates healthy lungs, but I wish you cared more about their mental health as you do their consenting adult lungs. Might I add, I have never hit a cigarette a day in my life, nor do I consume using tobacco. I create healthier turn ways of living for women stepping into sobriety, eliminating one more death due to Sacramento opioid and true drug problem. I have seen women on fentanyl, and the comparison to the women who consume cannabis is nonexistent.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Michaela Pearson. I am a member of the Greater Sacramento Smoke and Tobacco-Free Coalition. I also serve as the Tobacco-Free Programs Director at Breathe California Sacramento Region. For years, Breathe has been a leading advocate for clean air, healthy lungs, and tobacco prevention in the Sacramento region. Our current efforts focus on advancing smoke-free policies across Sacramento County, including outdoor work sites, parks, and multi-unit housing. California's legacy of smoke-free indoor spaces has long served as a model for protecting public health, particularly for workers in enclosed environments. Decades of research have demonstrated that inhaling any form of smoke, whether tobacco or cannabis, poses serious risks for lung health. Our primary concern lies with the increased exposure of workers to secondhand and thirdhand smoke in cannabis lounges. Allowing indoor cannabis smoking undermines decades of progress in safeguarding indoor workers' health. Cannabis smoke, much like tobacco smoke, contains harmful chemicals, including carcinogens and fine particulate matter that can damage respiratory and cardiovascular health. Scientific evidence confirms there is no safe level of exposure to these toxic substances, and ventilation systems cannot fully mitigate the risks associated with secondhand and thirdhand smoke. Given our longstanding work in tobacco prevention, we urge to approach this public health issue with the same caution and consideration as tobacco-related risks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Eliza Tong, Kyle Naas, Marbella Sala, Zion Taddis, and then Pam Lopez.
My name is Dr. Eliza Tong. I'm asking for the Sacramento City Council to oppose this pilot proposal with smoking inside cannabis cafes. For identification purposes, I'm a professor of internal medicine at UC Davis Health, but I'm representing myself as an individual. I'm also the Cessation Task Force Chair of our Greater Sacramento Smoke and Tobacco-Free Coalition, which sent in an opposition letter. Smoke-free workplace policies, including bars, have protected the health of workers and patrons in Sacramento since the 1990s. There is no safe space when you cannot meet clean indoor air quality standards with expensive ventilation or public health standards with masks. The heart and lung health risks are immediate with inflammation from fine particulates, gases, and vapors. So what happens to the worker or customer who doesn't realize they have asthma or COPD or heart disease until they get sick? Cleaning up indoor toxic residue of thirdhand smoke is also very expensive. The toxins accumulate and continue to react in off-gas. As any property manager will tell you, you have to replace carpets and chairs, et cetera, and deep-clean surfaces and walls. Also, what happens when you turn off all the smoke alarms and increase your fire risk? My healthcare colleagues and I take care of patients who are at risk for getting sicker from indoor smoking. Smoke is smoke, and we are learning that things that can be eaten like flavors make us sicker when it is inhaled. My research colleagues are publishing more about mental and physical risks with cannabis, including cancer. A recent JAMA article showed that there's an eightfold risk in laryngeal cancer with cannabis-related disorders, so heavy exposures. And that is something where the UC San Diego Cancer Center Director said this is déjà vu again with tobacco for cannabis. So there are risks, and this was controlled for alcohol and tobacco. So what happens to our healthcare risks and emergency room wait times when we all have to pay more as people get sicker? Let's not turn back time. Let's not make Sacramento workplaces smoky again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kyle Naas.
It does not help, it does not help the debate or anybody's cause to boo a speaker. Respect everyone's opinion, please.
My name is Kyle Naas. I've been here a few times, but there's a few new faces. So I just want to start out by saying, I grew up my first 17 years on the East Coast, so it's a pleasure to be even having this conversation in front of a city council like Sacramento, somewhere that is so forward with cannabis. But I am urging that we can continue to move forward with not only type-one but type-two consumption lounges because of not only the reasons that were stated before me with edibles consumption not really fitting the lounge, as well as a full type-two where people can consume edibles as well as inhalables. I feel this way because as not only a consumer, I am also somebody that is hopefully one day going to be a homeowner. And until then, with me and many other people that are living in apartments, we have nowhere to safely consume. It would be a lot better for a place that is a private place for adults only, where you get ID'd on the way in, not like bars where you can walk in and get ID'd later. But to get ID'd right when I walk in, I can walk into these places and know that I can consume safely. I don't have to feel like a criminal consuming, and that's the biggest concern I feel like for most of these people is you're allowing us to purchase this cannabis, but you're not allowing us to consume it. And that's where this divide really, I feel like, splits. And for a lot of the misinformation, I feel like a lot of that can get educated. I feel like lounges are a really great place for education, but not only lounges, but private events as well are a great place for education because people can come together and finally know how to consume the right way or know what not to consume. So this type-two would be an amazing first step towards like consumption and legalization, but I hope to, and urge that we can do private events.
Marbella Sala, then Zion, then Pam Lopez.
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank all of you for allowing this very lively discourse. I have been sitting here for the last hour, have heard some very interesting opinions. That being said, as the president of Garland and Northgate Neighborhood Association, I must ask you, you opposed this pilot program, and let me tell you why. It's not that I don't, I think the core program is an amazing program, and I don't oppose that. What I'm concerned with is I remember when we had the whole campaign against smoking over 40 years ago, and the tobacco industry said it was healthy, it's okay, secondhand smoke doesn't hurt, it's okay that Latinos and African-Americans are smoking at higher rates than other communities. And then there was a shift, and a public health shift, and said, no, it's not okay. And Latinos and African-Americans are smoking at higher rates, they have health outcomes that's affecting them, and we did a campaign to stop smoking and we've reduced that. Now we're saying, okay, it's okay to smoke marijuana, and I know that it's, you know, there's protection under 18, but we all know that our 18-year-olds or 15-year-olds or whatever, they're not abiding by the law, they smoke. So I think that we should not be encouraging smoking, period. We know smoking hurts, and it's going to hurt our young people, and I'm just like, why are we going backwards instead of going forward? We don't allow smoking in public spaces for a reason, and this should not, because it's marijuana, it should not change. And then the last point, people say it's medicinal, and it is medicinal, but many people are not using it for medicinal reasons, our young people...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Zion Taddis and Pam Lopez will be our final speaker.
Thank you for having me. I'm Zion Taddis, the founder of Shashmany Institute. It's an alternative natural holistic medicine. So for me, it's a common sense. I don't even know why we're comparing cannabis to cigarette smoking and alcohol because there is no study that shows cannabis ever, ever hurt anybody, whether children or adults. Nobody had died or got diagnosed from sickness from cannabis. So if you guys can show me the study that really hurt anybody, then we can start from there. And then another thing is, obviously, we don't want the cannabis lounge in every corner like you're putting the alcohol liquor store in our neighborhood. So it is going to be watched, and you know how hard it is even let alone to open a lounge, a cannabis lounge, even so hard for us even to operate as a business, cannabis business owners. So there's going to be so much regulation and so much study has to be where we are right now, it took over whatever years. So for me, as a Shashmany Institute business owner, I've already have a CUP for an event to have in my land, which is going to be regulated, also gated, and membership. So I would love for this to be passed because this is what I fought for from the beginning, not because so we can be here and say, no, you can't do this, you can't do that. So until you show us a study that somebody actually lost their life or their health through cannabis, which there is no study, we can...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Pam Lopez.
Pam Lopez, on behalf of California Normal. I was asked to speak briefly about AB 1775, but I think your staff did a great job covering that legislation in their analysis. Thank you for your excellent work. California Normal is the state's consumer rights and consumer safety organization. We care deeply about the health and safety of cannabis consumers as well as their education, and we care deeply about the safety of workers in cannabis consumption lounges, our good friends, which is why we worked in cosponsorship with UFCW on AB 1775 last year. We hope that bill gives local governments like the city of Sacramento the tools that you need to ensure that workers are kept safe in cannabis consumption lounges, and also to ensure that you are able to require ventilation systems to meet your city's worker safety and also consumer safety priorities. Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you, mayor. Before you move, I have no more speakers. Before you move on, in lieu of pass for publication, should this ordinance move forward, it will be published in full. That language was omitted from the agenda.
Well, can you just explain what that means exactly?
Thanks, you... So when an ordinance moves forward, we publish it in the newspaper. So prior to it coming for adoption, we do what we call a pass for publication, which would have been on the previous agenda. You would have approved that. I would have published it in the newspaper of general circulation, and we did not do that pass for publication. So in this instance, we will print the entire ordinance, not just the title, in a newspaper of general circulation.
But it doesn't have to be voted on again?
Correct, it does not.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Instead of just publishing the title, I'm going to publish the full ordinance.
Full ordinance, okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much to the members of the public for coming out and expressing yourselves and your passion and your strong opinions. And now we turn it over to the city council for some discussion and deliberation. I have up first Councilmember Katie Valenzuela.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, everybody who came to testify today. This has been a long haul. I put this on the agenda back when we had a log, Mr. Mayor, and you could just say you want something on the agenda, and half the council said yes to staff looking into this over two years ago. And so I do want to thank the staff for all of your work on this. In my four years on this dais, I've never seen an ordinance take this long or be this well-researched or heavily discussed at Law &amp; Ledge, as your timeline pointed out. We've discussed this numerous times. We've looked at other cities. We've analyzed the data. So I just want to thank you for getting us to this point. A simple statement to start off here is that if we believe cannabis should be legal, then everyone should have a legal place to use it. I want to say that again because if we believe cannabis should be legal, then everyone should have a legal place to use it. I say that twice because that is not the case today. Cannabis consumption is only legal for some. We have only partially decriminalized cannabis consumption. And approximately half of our city population, including myself, are renters who are not allowed to smoke in their homes. So yes, this ordinance will help them. It will also support first-time and medical users who want to ensure that they're being safe. It will help parents and caregivers, like we heard from today, who don't want cannabis in their homes and don't want to consume around their children or families. And yes, this will definitely support the businesses who are not just major employers and revenue generators for this city, they are the sole source of income for the Sacramento Children's Fund. So I say all of that to articulate why I feel this is very important and why I'm supportive of taking this step today. So I would like to move the item as proposed by staff for a pilot project for type-one and two permits with one change. And I want to thank Kimberly Cargile for your studious review, as always, of all of the ordinance language that comes forward. I would like to say that under cannabis consumption lounge premise restrictions, that section, there is a subsection A and E that requires spaces to be indoors, fully enclosed, and soundproof. I think those restrictions should only be subject to type-two permits. So type-one permit would not have the indoor, enclosed, soundproof requirement, but type-two permits would. Because to Ms. Cargile's point, you know, type-one is just ingestible. We already have code in here that says it has to be not visible to the public. It already has to be tied to a licensed dispensary, so I'm not changing any of that. I'm just saying the indoors, the soundproof, the fully enclosed. And our existing law regulates outdoor noise, so today I could invite people over to a yard and have a yoga party or whatever, and our existing zoning rules already regulate how loud those things can be and how many people can be allowed there. So I think that makes sense. And I just want to say to my colleagues that I'm actually, I'm okay with whatever outcome happens today. We've done this for years now. It's been almost, I didn't think that when we put this on the agenda, it would have taken almost three years to get to this point. And I frankly think it's time for us to just make a decision one way or the other if we're ready to proceed. But I do want to encourage my colleagues who might be hesitant to remember that this is a pilot. So let's talk about what it would look like to try this out. Let's talk about what data and outcomes we want staff to track so that we... what data and outcomes we want staff to track, so that we understand the impact of this pilot, and council is aware of any alarm bells or any issues that might be arising, and let's really, let's follow the examples that other cities right here in California are already doing, and show what it looks like to do this safely. Thank you.
I'm going to ask people to not cheer and clap after every speaker, this is, well, it just slows us down, it's a serious debate, and we want to be able to engage here, and I know we don't debate in the normal way, but I'm torn on this, and so I want to ask Councilmember Valenzuela that question about one thing that you said, just will help me as I make my decision here. You said at the very beginning, and it was your main argument, that if we believe it is legal, everyone should have a legal place to use it. Can you contrast that, please, with the state of cigarettes and tobacco?
As far as...
Because bars, you're not supposed to smoke indoor and public places.
Correct, but as far as I'm aware, there is not a blanket prohibition on smoking cigarettes in public places, but there is for cannabis. So, I can't walk down a sidewalk and smoke cannabis, I can't be in a park and smoke cannabis, I can only smoke cannabis in private space, which is the distinct difference between tobacco and cannabis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor, and also I just want to build upon that a little bit, it's, you can only legally smoke cannabis on private property, and so with that, obviously can't be a government building, can't be a public space where other people are, which literally means, if you happen to own your home, then you can smoke there, whereas if you're a renter, you probably have something in your rental agreement that prevents that. So, it's truly, if you're a renter, which we think, which is about 50% of the city of Sacramento, then you don't have a legal place to smoke. So, I just want to further build upon what Councilmember Valenzuela said, and I want to say, I want to start by saying that when this conversation was first happening in these chambers, I was sitting over there advocating for this, along with many of you in this room, and it is kind of jarring that now I'm two years into my job, and we're having this conversation still. So, I would just really echo Councilmember Valenzuela's comments about, let's just make a decision, I think now is the time, whatever the outcome is, I think we will all accept and move forward with, but it's time, it's been a really long road, and I really want to thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for all your advocacy on this over several years. Thank you. I've said my, I made my stance on this known, so I'm sure it's pretty clear that I support this, but I do, I just want to point out a few things that just came from comments that were said today, things that are just floating around my head. First and foremost, with Proposition 64 in 2016, the people of California voted to add to the Constitution of California, it's a constitutional right for every person who's over the age of 21 to be able to access and consume cannabis, it's just the facts. And so, people can have whatever opinions they want about whether they should or should not do that, whether they should or should not drink alcohol, should or should not do any other thing, if you're over the age of 21, that is your constitutional right in the state of California, and so the question before us really is, in what state do we want to allow it? And that is where the local governments come in, and the state, and so it is our right as a council to have a discussion about whether or not we want to allow this, but, you know, in the context of the comments that Councilmember Valenzuela just made, which is, how do we ensure that no matter what your status is, whether you're a homeowner or a renter, that you have the same rights? And right now, that's not the case. So, that's a key for me. And the other thing I was really compelled by, that I didn't think about, because I don't yet have children, though I plan to, is I consume cannabis, and if I have my children at home, and that's the only place where I can legally consume cannabis, because I'm a homeowner, what do I do if I don't want to do it around my children? You know, at this point, that's not really an option, right? And so there are, we know that there's a lot of parents that choose, as is their legal right, to consume cannabis, and so I think it's incumbent upon us to create opportunities for them to do so in a way that not only puts, doesn't put their children at risk, but allows them a safe space to do so, so I want to point that out. Something else that popped into my head is, the state currently views this, if you're a medical patient, which you are, there are many, the state provides incentives for medical patients to access cannabis out with remedies from taxes. That means that the state recognizes that there are medical cannabis users that use this as a remedy, as an intervention, and they subsidize it. So, that's something that we should think about, right? This is not just people who want to use it recreationally, though that is their right, this is also people that are doing so for medical purposes, so I think that's really important to point out, and a lot of those people who happen to be renters may not have an opportunity to do so legally. The other thing that I was thinking, this has been around for years, I mean, there have been consumption lounges in other cities in the state of California for many years now, there is a lot of data for us to look at and see, and see, did it work, did it not? And I know our staff has done an incredible job, and they've done that research, thank you, and so, you know, we know, we know that it does work well in other places, and that we can do it here. This has been brought up, but Measure L, our children's fund, is funded through cannabis tax revenues, we should be trying to support the industry in every way we can, if we want to support that fund. I think about that all the time, because I supported Measure L, and I really want to see our youth programs be successful, that means we have to make our, help our legal industry in Sacramento be successful too. UFCW, I mean, when I see, you know, our labor partners here advocating in support of this, they're saying, hey, our workers, we, the unionized cannabis workers in Sacramento, they want this, this is good for them, and it's good for us, and so I'm, that's something that is very important to me. And then, you know, this was pointed out for several speakers, but there is a double standard, right? If we don't have this, there's hookah lounges, I've been to them, I don't prefer them, but I've been to them, there's definitely cigar lounges, and so whatever decision this council makes, we need to make sure that we're applying this across the board equally, because otherwise that does create a double standard, depending on what type of business you're in, and that's not something that I support. And then the last was, I think it was Mr. Hernandez, who said Sacramento's always led, and that's true. I mean, we had, we had legal cannabis dispensaries and other businesses in Sacramento, long before even 2016, right? So, we have always led on these issues, we've always been pretty progressive, but those were pilot programs too, that's what this is, this is a pilot program. Let's try it out, let's see how it works for us, let's test it, let's make sure that we have the right measures in place, and we are really seeing what's going to work for us, and then we can use that data to inform future decisions, but I will be supporting this today, I'll be seconding the motion on the table, and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two colleagues that are incredibly passionate, Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilwoman Maple, I want to thank them just for their hard work, and city staff for bringing this item. I am not part of Law &amp; Ledge, so everything that I'm hearing is when it comes to the full council, so just want to give kudos to the Law &amp; Ledge committee members that sit on Law &amp; Ledge, that did all the work to get us here, and really just wanted to take this time to thank all of the speakers from both sides, those that are in opposition, and those that are also in support. Some of my comments are going to be very similar to when we had our discussion earlier this month, or last, yeah, earlier this month, a few weeks ago, and then also just my position on this ordinance in particular. As I've shared during the last council meeting, when we had this workshop, you know, cannabis, the topic of cannabis in debate isn't something that's new, right? In Oakland, in San Francisco, now in Sacramento, and as you heard from both of my colleagues, it's something that Councilwoman Valenzuela has brought forth a couple of years now, and we're finally here at this moment. And so, appreciate that now, this is a moment that Sacramento is going to debate it and have a conversation about where we want to take this city. You know, as, for me, as policymakers, we have the responsibilities of having to navigate the benefits and the risks associated with a policy, right? And so, I just want to acknowledge a few things, and I've acknowledged it at the last meeting, but also I know there are some new folks in the space, so I want to just reaffirm just kind of where I'm at. One, I think two things can be true at the same time, right? We know that cannabis is used by adults for medical reason, folks have spoken during public comment today about its benefits for certain conditions, and especially for those individuals, have family members who are adults who use it, because they don't respond well to traditional, to traditional medication, right? And it is another alternative form, so want to hold space that that is a truth. At the same time, we also know from a public health perspective, and even those that are in support of the policy have acknowledged publicly the harm that it does on young people as well, right? And so I appreciate folks also acknowledging that as well, and the research is there, it does show. Whether you're an adult, you know, you make your decision whether you're going to use it or not, but for young people, we know that it has a harmful effect, and there's even recent studies that we're seeing increase of use in marijuana among pregnant women, especially among women of color and black women, so I just want to acknowledge that. I think it's important to acknowledge these things, that both can be true at the same time. Public health for me is about creating the conditions so people can make healthier choices, right? At the end of the day, our job is to create a healthier environment, so people can change those conditions, they can change their behaviors. I think where I'm struggling right now, and I also want to appreciate folks saying, if this is about creating safe places, then we need to make sure that there are safe places for folks to go to. I think for me, that's where my struggle is right now, where I, where I'm like, okay, what is the alternative, right? And so I appreciate Councilwoman Valenzuela and Councilwoman Maple really, you know, echoing that, because I think that's the piece that I'm trying to sort through as the policymakers. I do want to say, you know, as I'm listening to both side, like, this issue of cannabis and the health risk is multifaceted, right? I want to acknowledge that, yes, on one hand, legalization has had its benefits, it's increased tax revenue for the city, I'm going to name that, it has reduced criminalization, and good impacts for some adults who use it, right? On the other hand, and this is real too, the challenge is that we see young people accessing this, right? We also see impaired driving, and we see long-term health effects. I also want to note, because I think several folks have reached out to me about, and I've heard a speaker saying, well, you have cigar lounges, and there's tobacco lounges, I just want to just put on the record, I don't know where my colleagues are, but for me, and I've been pretty vocal about this, but I don't support tobacco or cigar lounges, just period, that's just me, right? I've always been opposed to that, I've also always been opposed to like cannabis, tobacco, and alcohol ads as well, because for me, I've always done a lot of youth engagement, youth education, and that's always been a passion of mine, and something that I really care about deeply, because I've seen the usage in alcohol and cannabis among young people. And even right now, there's been conversation with me and Mayor Protag Talamontes, because in District 3 and in District 8, I see tobacco ads up in my district, right, riding around liquor stores, and I'm not in support of that, right? So, for me, it's not about cannabis, like, I support the core program, but I've never been supportive of cannabis, tobacco, or alcohol ads, just straight up, all legal substance. So, I will always be honest and upfront with my people, with everyone, right? That has always been my position, I really am thinking about the young people, and I know before my colleagues mentioned Measure L, yes, absolutely, 40% of cannabis revenue does go to Measure L, but the reason why that is, is because when I was one of the, one of the many folks that worked on Measure L, youth included, we went after the cannabis revenue, because we also knew the impact that it had on young people, because we could have gone other, against other, we could have gone towards other revenue, but there's a reason why we went after cannabis, because we wanted to mitigate the harm, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that to both of my colleagues, absolutely, it's a huge percentage, but we were intentional about that, because we knew about the harm that it would cause young people, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that. I think no matter the outcome, if this does pass, it will also give us an opportunity to kind of study and to see how it does in Sacramento, and so I don't know where the votes are, if you're counting your votes on the dais, but for me, even though it's a pilot, it's going to come back again, right? And if it does pass, I want it to be successful too, I want to make sure that we don't have harm on our, you know, on our workers, right, those who are working in the smoke lounges. And so, I don't know, I'm not, right now, I'm kind of like, I want to have a conversation with my colleagues, I want to talk about the alternatives, I want to talk about, you know, if this does pass, what are some of the key indicators that we want to look at as a council, right? Because it's a pilot program, so this council should also be making suggestions on what we want to see after we're done with the pilot, because that's going to determine if we want to continue, and so that's the piece of the conversation, I actually want to have dialogue in, and so with that, I'll pause there, because I really want to hear it from the rest of my colleagues, and if this item does pass, that's where the bulk of the conversation that I really want to have, in terms of the pilot in itself. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tao.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank my fellow councilmembers on the Law &amp; Ledge for taking up the discussion for the past couple of years, one of the newest members on council, however, I do feel strongly against, about this industry, I am supportive of the cannabis industry, but I run a youth organization, I've been working with youth for the past four or five years, and I've seen the impacts of access in low-income neighborhoods, especially District 2, echoing what Councilmember Vang says, with cannabis ads, tobacco ads. I, on the hand, is, you know, am supportive of the type 1, I am really on the fence on the type 2 and supporting that, because also with the secondhand smoke and re-legislating, you know, and re-allowing, from a land use perspective, as policymakers, to really allow a smoking industry back into our city ordinance, I know we work hard to address secondhand smoke with a lot of other, just such as tobaccos and issues, and so my heart is, I really don't want to see us have legislation to reopen up our land use and allow smoking back into our bars and our public spaces. I do hear the community, and I do understand that, yes, we need to look at how we can discuss furthermore with access to smoking for the public use, or for the people, because this is a topic which is, I think it's really tough moving forward with not having enough public spaces or private spaces for individuals and folks, and who's using it for the medical side, to really use, be able to have access to smoking, and so I think, I would love to hear from my colleagues furthermore with this discussion, but then at this moment, I'm very adamant on supporting a type 2.
You're very what?
Admit I'm not supporting the type 2.
Not supporting it, okay. Okay, Councilmember Kaplan-Ningetta, I'll be right back.
Thank you, Mayor. I really want to thank staff for their hard work to getting to this point, you know, it almost, as you said, Valenzuela, it took a long time, it's the unknown sausage-making with legislating. I'm just going to say it quickly, my position hasn't changed, I am supportive of expanding our current permitting process to allow for consumption of state-licensed events, and creating a pilot program that is focused on best practices, as well as how we educate our youth and parents for type 1 and type 2, even supporting the amendment, as I was conferring earlier with our city attorney, I think we need to look at Section 5.150.1380 and amend it, so that it sets out what type 1 is allowed and type 2, because honestly, I'll come and have yoga, I mean... But that goes to being supportive, innovative, small-business ideas, and we should not have our zoning restrict in certain areas, but I do believe in the keeping the not visible to the public, but if it's open air, so you can grow a garden and have private spaces on an already duly licensed area, I am fully supportive of that. So, as we, as we go through and talk about this, I almost want to remove that we're talking about cannabis, and go to, as a city, we constantly put forward that we're addressing, how do we address equity in the city? How do we address disparity? So, I want to talk about those two items, it's in light of that we're talking about cannabis, but we constantly have the conversation of how do we create equity in our city and eliminate disparity. Prop 64 pass, so whether you like it or not, as the vice mayor indicated, when you're 21, you get to make the choice, whether you're a parent and you agree with that, aunt, uncle, grandma, guess what, too bad, so sad, they're 21 and they get to make choices. I think what's incumbent upon us as policymakers in the greater community is the education and information that is put out, and that's where I know Measure L, and I trust the work that is already being done by many organizations for that education, and how do we even partner with our schools? Studies are showing younger kids are not imbibing, and not participating at a rate that they used to, but I think where we have to go to, and I said this, I walk into my third-grader's classroom, I know the two kids who live in a household or in a apartment where cannabis is being smoked, those children do not have a choice, and if we're talking about equity, is what we're doing, is we are discriminating and pitting renters against homeowners. We embody, we even have an equity subcommittee, if we're talking about it, I don't, like, I have to remove how I might feel personally about a subject matter, and that's what my colleagues, we look at when we talk about it, you know, Vice Mayor is correct, somebody can walk down a street and smoke a cigarette. Sure, you can do that with cannabis, but you will be stopped and fined, and you'll have a record. Let's speak common sense, have you ever been to City Hall on the weekend? If I come on the weekend and come into my office, I'm watching people do fentanyl right out front, out here. out front, out here.
Yep.
Yet, they're not being held accountable.
Ms. Kaplan, I'm sorry, respect this chamber, please do not shout out, sir. Thank you.
I just want to, thank you, Mayor. I just want to create equity, because if we're going to go after people smoking cannabis, we should go after people smoking fentanyl, and fentanyl is killing people at a rate that we absolutely know. And if we're talking about, like, disparity, there is disparity, because you can go to a bar and drink alcohol. You can't go to a bar and imbibe right now, or eat cannabis. We're treating it as separate, and that's not the core of who we are as a city. As a city, we are talking about how do we create that equity? And I got to tell you, it's a choice. If you were a homeowner and you smoke at home, I will tell you, my neighbor across the way tried to put their house on the market for a year. I walked in just to check it out, and I got high just by walking in. It was so steeped in their walls that they would have to strip the paint and redo it. But that is a choice of the homeowner. And guess what? As a homeowner, nowadays, you need money to buy it, again, creating a disparity, that if you have a home, you can make that choice. And rightfully so for the landlord, landlords who are renting. You do not want people smoking inside, because it sticks to the walls and you have to repaint. So we have a system that is already set up for inequality and inequity. And I agree with Councilmember Myveng, two truths can be true at the same time. And that is an absolute truth. And I think, you know, we as a city, guess what? We don't, if this doesn't pass, people are still going to be doing it. We're not making it safer for kids and renters. They may just start going to the parks. If people aren't being held accountable for smoking fentanyl, why should then people follow the law and not smoke in our public parks and our public places? It's, it's, I just want to infuse some common sense, because guess what? It's already happening. So why not use this as a way in a pilot program to how to instill in a limited pilot program best practices? If we do prove this with Type 1 and Type 2, I am open, because I think in a pilot program, we should not have them all within the same vicinity. Should they be a half a mile or a mile apart? Because there shouldn't be concentration in one area. I believe you have to look at, at a balance with, with a, with a pilot. Key indicators, if this does go through, we do need to start gathering the data. And what is that data? And I would want to hear that come back when you come, you complete the FEAS study, then we should come back with key indicators of looking at crime and public health, and how do we partner, and has there been increase in usage, what educational features have worked? I am appreciative of knowing with the state law that our union partners would be employees, but we have to realize, when you are 21, it is a choice. We can talk about good behavior, bad behavior, but it is a choice that is going to exist no matter what. And by the way, we're not the first one. And Sacramento likes to be a leader, so I think it's time we try this out, knowing that we have the power, that if something really bad goes wrong, we can undo this as a, as a council. So, once again, I am supportive of the, the pilot program and the next steps. I think we have to listen. People are doing this, so let's provide them a safe space that is now equitable.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the time. First, I do want to thank everyone who has spent the time to participate and be engaged in this conversation. And I never thought I'd spend this much time, when I first ran for council in 2015, discussing, you know, cannabis, because it has been a big issue. And frankly, you know, if, when I look at this, of the 215 permits that are in the city, I think 146 are in my council district. And so, I've worked very much in detail in this whole process about how the industry evolves, and, and safety. And thinking about this in a rational way has been the, the constant issue about how we move forward. So, so bottom line, one, I do want to thank, you know, the, the folks here who came here as patients, who, who see this as a, an opportunity for them, for, to address their needs. And I have a lot of sensitivity to those needs. But when I look at the testimony, and we're supposed to make a decision based here on the testimony of what we've received, the, the common theme comes to two things. Number one, those that have been pushing in support, and I rank through this, are business owners who want to see their business grow. It's, and it, the list is long, and they see this as an opportunity for their growth. In fact, that was the, the common theme. This is our way for our industry to grow. This is the way we can make more money. We can't make more money during the other way. And so, it's a financial choice. It's a financial decision. And those who came into the industry made a decision to go into it before we even had the conversation of consumption allowance. The opposition primarily, primarily, has been from those concerned about public health. And let's talk about, I think, the facts here, the facts that have been proposed. And I want to go back to Dr. Schicks from the, the School of Medicine of the University of California, San Francisco, which is the leading premier institution. UC Davis Medical Center would probably argue that as well, who's in front, but, but mention the, the rates and how different cities have different rates of smoking, and what they've done for those rates of smoking. And those have to do with the actions of the city. We've taken a significant action to address that, to address the issues affecting with how we encourage or normalize or not normalize smoking, period. And the, the issue about a pilot program, whether it's three years, we know that public health, we don't, that, that those health effects aren't in a three-year period or five-year period. In fact, it took us decades to address those issues. And bottom line, today's action and ordinance is about whether the city of Sacramento moves forward with recreational smoking lounges. That's, that's what we're discussing here. And recreational smoking lounges under the restrictions of the state, which are in dispensaries. And when you look at where dispensaries are, let's talk about equity, they're in South SAC and in North SAC. There are some in District 4, and only recently, and the restrictions. There's none in the Thomas, there are none in the Pocket, there's none in East Sacramento. There are, the reality is that, that this is where, when we talk about equity and distribution...
Please.
And the majority, correctly. So, you know, so we, so if we want to lay those issues, but I, but I want to, I want to circle back to, again, what we've heard from Dr. Donald Lyman. I think, who was the author and proponent of Prop 64? I think the efforts that we've done is to address criminalization and to make sure that we remove that stigma. But it's the issue here about smoke lounges, which is the, the most concerning part. I mean, you heard in the testimonies from the last two hearings, hearings, Dr. Lynn Silver from the Public Health Institute say, "This is sending the wrong signal after many years of encouraging not only youth but adults to make good decisions." Now, local governments and state governments have taken that action to say, hey, we need to do that, to make good decisions. We heard from Dr. List from the American Academy of Pediatricians, also, pediatrics, the people, the doctors who take care of our kids say, "This, this is sending the wrong signal and creating the wrong encouragement to create healthy habits." Second, Jamie Morgan from the American Heart Association also said that this is going in the wrong direction for Sacramento. None of them opposed, have said that they oppose Prop 64. Autumn Ogden for the American Cancer Society also testified in opposition, clearly, smoking of any type, smoking whether it's from, you know, forest fires, cigarettes, or cannabis becomes an issue. And even first five, first five who is helping our kids has come out and testified and sent a letter saying, you know, even though they're tied to revenue that affects their, their way to support children, that, that they oppose also the issue of smoke lounges. Again, why? Because even the American Society of, of, of heat and, of heat and air and refrigeration work engineers, the people who actually designed these systems have said, in their letter and in their research, that there is no safe level. We heard from the doctors yesterday who work at hospitals and use negative pressure. They use those systems, again, and testified that you'd have to have a multi-layered level system to be able to address those impacts. Again, we're looking at a pilot program to allow and continue the move of smoking. And yes, there have been issues about, you know, well, you know, there, whether or not someone who rents can smoke. Well, we don't allow, many, many places, we don't allow in hotels now, smoking in hotels. That's a state law now that was recently passed, for good reason. Not only because it affects other people who don't want to be exposed to smoke, and that's why we, we received the letter from Americans for Non Smoking Rights, people who are affected by people who are walking around, but because smoke is so damaging. It's damaging to the point where you have to have experts to come and clean up smoke. That's why you can't sell a home from someone who smoked. And we know that, that because it's dangerous and it's, and it, it creates harmful effects to the lungs. So it goes back to the point about what message do we want to send? Do we want to normalize smoking or not? Now, the concern was, well, maybe, well, we can't smoke outside or walk around in parks. Well, that's clearly because THC is also, creates impairment to people. And that, and, and in essence, it's different. There's no question that tobacco and cannabis are two different things. There's no question about that. The question that we have as a council is, do we want to allow a pilot program that normalizes smoking? A pilot program that when Sacramento, in our, in our area, as we drive the numbers down of people smoking of any kind, and in fact, those cigar lounges, I agree with Councilmember Vang, I, I'm, they're, they're non-conforming uses. And, and I, and if they were to close, I don't see us ever opening another cigar lounge in Sacramento. Now, if they're done in casinos in sovereign tribal land, that's their prerogative, but in Sacramento, you know, I don't see us opening another smoke lounge like that. So it comes down to the point here about what is our, what is the message that we're trying to say? Send, and that is that smoking is dangerous. We spent 40 years, and I appreciate, you know, those that have testified, that have said that, you know, we spent 40 years dispelling the myths, and we heard them today, again today. This is natural, this is okay. No, there's, there, there are uses and applications for everything. But what, one thing we have known over and over again, and particularly Sacramento, that it's a federal limite zone, we've known over and over again, is that smoking and second-hand smoke, and even third-hand smoke, is detrimental. So should we be the ones to pilot public health? Or the danger to public health? That is the big difference. The constitutionality of, of it, and Prop 64 passing, was to address the criminalization of it. But as a city, should we be going back on our efforts? I'm very proud of the work that we've done as a city, in our staff, in our code officers, to, to look at, you know, those who have been going after and selling cigarettes or, you know, to minors, and getting rid of all of the, you know, flavored tobacco that was targeting our community, and targeting Latino and African, African-American communities. But we see those again. Down Stockton Boulevard, you'll see a big sign that says, you know, Cantina Cannabis. Again, it's the issues of targeting specific communities. I don't see them on Folsom Boulevard in East Sacramento. I do see them in the South area. I will end by saying that, you know, the facts are clear. I mean, we saw testimony from what is happening inside a cannabis lounge. That was the, the data that was presented to us, the dangers of that. And people who are adults and choose to go to that, that's, you know, is one thing, but you even heard from folks that someone's got to go in there and deal with the residue. And then the city after that has to go out and enforce it. And to my understanding, we don't even have staff on our city that can, that manages air quality. That's an entire purview for another area. Is that correct, Assistant City Manager?
That is correct.
So even with the, the lack of personnel, lack of enforcement. So when we made the decision, and this is how, again, it goes back to the issue of smoking, not the issue of cannabis, when we made the decision to ban, to ban flavored tobacco in Sacramento, we made it with a conscious decision that it would cost us tax revenue. The argument today of something that we're not even collecting is that, oh, we're going to miss out on tax revenue. We took a tougher stance against smoking when we knew it was going to affect our general fund, because we knew that the public health was a major priority. I asked my members of the council to think about that message that we're, we're sending today. As we, regardless of what happens today, I think what's important is that we take every safeguard moving forward to ensure that that's the first thing, that we, that we protect the safety of the public. That's our bottom line of our, of our city. And it shouldn't be driven by whether we're in a deficit or whether some business needs to make money. It needs to be made by the decision of what message. And I hope that in the future, when they, when we look at the statistics of smoking rates in different cities, that our city is in the smallest area, the smallest number of percentage of people who are smoking, because it is detrimental to public health. So I'll stop there and say, I want to thank everyone who, who testified, who's participated in, in this conversation. And I urge my colleagues, as I've made before, that as a matter of public health, I urge you no vote.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Geta, for all the time and effort, thought you've put into this. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
I just thank you so much to all the speakers that came out today. Really enjoyed hearing what you have to say, and to my council colleagues, like, a robust discussion, and, I mean, a really good one to have. For me, I mean, I just want to say, we, we ban smoking in businesses because second-hand smoke causes cancer and other diseases. Public health experts are telling us that smoking cannabis produces many of the same toxins as smoking tobacco, and for that reason, I will be voting no today.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank my colleagues for their comments on this, and all of you in the audience who have come and spoke out on this. Overwhelming number of people who wanted to voice their opinion, and we heard everything you said. And so, I thank you for coming out today. I'm in support of a pilot program for onsite consumption. I sat here for a long time trying to figure out whether or not the five-year period of time was too much for a pilot program. And I tried to figure out whether it should be less, or whether it should be more, or whether it was the right number. And I think, in listening to the entire discussion between yourselves and my colleagues up here, I came up with the fact that it is the right number, because when we decided to go to the core centers and to legalize marijuana, I mean cannabis, when we decided to do that, we also needed to make sure that there was a legal place to be able to smoke it, or consume it in whatever way you wanted to do so. So a lot of the conversation that we're having today, I'm sure we had when we first talked about legalizing cannabis, but we didn't think it all the way through to the fact that if you have a business and you're selling cannabis, and you're selling products of cannabis, that you should be able to expand your business in any way necessary. And if I were in the business right now, I would make sure that we expanded it to the lounges, because that would give the people a place to be able to smoke without having to smoke at home, and, and in front of their kids. Or maybe they couldn't even smoke at home because they lived in an apartment that doesn't allow you to smoke. And so we've already, many of us have already had that conversation. And so we've already, many of us have already had that conversation. But I'm very much in favor of the five years now because it gives us the ability to study the impact of what we're doing. It gives us the ability to make sure that the ventilation systems are the right ventilation systems to control the smoke. It gives us the ability to create a safe place for people to smoke, and they don't have to feel like they're being criminalized for smoking. They have a safe place to go. It gives us the ability to educate and create an education system so that the next generation maybe makes a different decision than the current generation is making or makes the same for that part. It gives you a safe place to medicaid. And so I'm not a user of cannabis. It's not something I do. But if I were, it would put me in an odd situation as to where I'd be able to do it and do it comfortably. And so for that reason, I'm supportive of the pilot program and making sure that the pilot program for the next five years gives us enough education in order to be able to go forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Those of you who are counting votes at home. Know that it comes down to the man in the middle seat here. So before I express my opinion, I actually want to ask a couple of questions. I don't want to ask them through staff and also through Vice Mayor Maple and Councilmember Valenzuela, who I think, you know, are the two, sort of been the two lead proponents And you've been working on this for several years, but as you have tried to define the scope of a pilot, we have up to 40 dispensaries, correct, that would be eligible for this quote pilot? Was there any, excuse me, was there any thought given to potentially starting with a smaller pilot of like 10 of the dispensaries instead of all 40? Because if we are trying to assess, as Councilmember Gueda said, the benefits and the risks, why not start smaller than opening this up to 40 dispensaries all at one time?
So there's two factors around not having a number limit. One is that a lot of dispensaries won't have space to do this onsite. So by limiting it to onsite, we're already naturally limiting the number of dispensaries who would be able to do it.
We know what, I'm sorry, do we know?
I will have to defer to staff if they have any deeper analysis on that. The other point is that most dispensaries are probably not going to do type two because that ventilation requirement is quite expensive. And so we didn't want to get too particular because we thought about maybe by district, maybe total number, like that's all been discussed. And it was such an imperfect, that we said, well, why don't we just see what happens? And within reason, within these parameters of this ordinance, but yeah.
Right, well, Councilmember Mayfield, did you want to add anything to that? So let me ask that question then of staff. How many of the, well, how many dispensaries do we have now? I know we've permitted.
We have 40 slots, but 30.
Forty slots and 35.
You need to put on your mic.
Thirty-five are currently permitted.
Thirty-five. And of the 35 and even taking the next five, up to 40, how many of them have the space for the type-two permit?
We haven't done that analysis, so we don't know. But the type-two, they would also need the ventilation as well.
I understand. But that's another requirement, but you don't have the space. Okay. Well, again, no criticism. I would appreciate, I would love if we had that information because I would actually love to know the scope of the pilot here. Because I am sensitive to what Councilmember Gueda and Vang and Tao have expressed about geographical equity here, right? So if we were to say, for example, that in District Six, and I don't know, how many dispensaries do you have, Eric?
Ten, a third of them. Little less now with 40.
So, you know, you wouldn't, I know what your position is and respect it, but I might feel a little bit better here if we were to say, okay, in District Six, where there's a disproportionate number, that the pilot is limited to X number out of the 10. I mean, I, so that's what I'm trying to explore here, whether or not there is a match between who might be ready to do it and what it is we permit. Here's the second question.
Can I comment to your question on the dispensary issue and the permit?
Go ahead, sure.
So here, you know, having had so many dispensaries and been through this process, I want you to also take into consideration, the staff is proposing, you know, going, changing the permitting process so that we don't have CUPs and changing Title 17 means that it becomes administrative. A lot of the dispensaries, when they were approved, there were people who didn't like cannabis but said, hey, look, if people are adults, if they want to purchase it at a dispensary and go home and use it, that's fine. Talked to a lot of neighbors who, that's not their cup of tea, but, you know, people are adults, what they do at their house is their own thing. The issue here becomes if the process moving forward does a bait and switch where it's an issue of transparency for the neighbors who were not objecting to a dispensary because it wasn't a place of consumption. There's a reason why we regulate bars and liquor stores differently. What we're doing now here is we're creating an opportunity to marry those two positions. Now, it's not unlike, you know, I'm not saying that it doesn't occur, but it's not unlike, say, a vineyard or even a brewery that produces and sells and does that. But during the permitting process of allowing those dispensaries, that was not open to the public to weigh into those considerations. So take that into.
I do take that into, and I, you know, I know that the old call-up provisions were controversial, maybe didn't work so well for an individual council member to be able to call something up. But I'm just wondering, and I said, this is the way, again, democracy works, everybody. We have these public discussions. We don't have them behind closed doors here. This is the way it really works. So I hope you appreciate it. And this is the only opportunity I have to talk to my colleagues, and I guess I'm kind of the deciding votes. I want to be, I want to be very thoughtful about what it is I do. So thank you for your patience. Is there any analog to a call-up that would allow, for example, a Councilmember Gueda to be able to say, well, in my district, it's not fair to have 10 consumption lounges by virtue of the way it works versus another district? Is there a way that you can think of to at least give any of the council members who have expressed their reservations some limit on the number of consumption lounges?
That's an interesting question. The changes Councilmember Gueda are referencing haven't come to this body yet. And so I think that whether or not we move to staff level, what sort of call-up there are, could be a discussion when those changes come forward because I think the disproportionality in concentrations in District Two and Six are concerning to all of us. I think I have five dispensaries in the new District Four, if I'm counting in my head correctly. And so I, yeah, I mean, we talked about whether or not there should be a cap, like, I'm fine with all the dispensaries in my district doing it, frankly, because they're spread out enough. But I, yeah, I mean, I'm worried about us adding an additional requirement on top of what will already be a costly temporary program. So I guess, if you wanted to discuss like reasonable caps or something like that, I mean, I know Councilmember Kaplan suggested the half-mile buffer idea of like if somebody else does it. I mean, obviously, then it would just, I mean, then you're balancing the equity concerns, right? Because an equity participant might not be as quick as like a traditional participant to apply, and so would they lose out just because someone else got there first? I mean, it's hard to know how to cut this, you know?
So let me ask another question where there may be an obvious answer here, but I want to put it out there anyways, which is that, you know, the difference between, type-one doesn't seem controversial. I understand type-one in and of itself isn't of interest to the community. I understand that. I heard that through the testimony. But has there been any exploration of whether type-two could be permitted in an outdoor space adjacent to the dispensary itself as opposed to an indoor space?
It was discussed, I believe, some cities, and I'll let staff, some other cities in California allow that. But I think the concern was, again, because some of these dispensaries are in residential areas, you wouldn't want, you know, drift smoke to be happening into the nearby area, which is why we kept the enclosed indoor type-two. But as far as I know, the negative pressure, the negative pressure stuff works pretty well and is changing, so that was the idea.
Anything you want to add on that?
I just want us to be careful. One of the issues that we run into in general, and we discuss this a lot in lawn and ledge as it relates to the cannabis issue, but I think it might be true of other policy areas in the city, is when we create arbitrary restrictions. So like, let's pick an arbitrary number or a space requirement. It creates other challenges, and some of those are equity challenges. And so, you know, I really just caution against that for almost anything, that we need to be really tied to something concrete. I think we already have, well, I guess I have a question for staff. If we were to move forward with this today, there would be a process by which those who are interested in pursuing a cannabis consumption lounge at their already licensed dispensary, they'd have to apply for it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what's the approval, what's the, excuse me, I'm sorry. What would be the approval process for the individual dispensary?
So they would be, so they would be looking at a modification, so we would condition the storefront permit. So they would apply for a modification and they meet specified requirements. And that is something in the staff report that we've outlined of what those requirements would be.
Okay, here's the key question. Under what you contemplate, would a council member or the full city council have the ability to review that, that decision to grant a permit?
I think I would ask the city attorney to comment on that.
Would the council be able to comment on whether?
Not comment, approve. In other words, is this a discretionary permit of some kind that would?
Like, do you need like a CUP? Right, Mayor? We are asking like.
To be clear, if they have a dispensary, they already have a conditional use permit on the property itself.
I understand. With the modification, not that it automatically comes to the city council, we're not trying to put more process for process sake, but would a modified permit process allow a city council member who did not want this in his or her district to have it be reviewed?
There isn't anything like that in the ordinance right now.
Yeah, that's not how it's set up in the ordinance right now. I guess my question, so from the staff perspective, we're going to regulate however council wants to regulate it. My question would be if that's legal, then that's a policy decision for the council. I just don't know that.
Okay. So let's acknowledge that in three weeks, there's going to be somebody else in the seat. And he or she may or may not have a different opinion than me, and there will also be other new members here too. So when this comes back with the regulatory process, that will be a new question for a new city council. So here's where I'm at, okay? And the makers of the motion can consider my point of view on this. Usually, in public life, my heart and my head merge together pretty well. And this is one of the rare instances where my heart and head are not together. And this may not be the most important thing we've considered over eight years, but it's been one of the most difficult decisions that I've faced because I want to do the right thing. And here's what my heart says to me. My heart says, my heart is sort of with Councilmember Gueda, which says that every public policy decision we make ought to further restrict smoke. That's my, and I have been, if you look at my long public record with the Lung and Heart Association Beat California my entire life. I've been at so many rallies and so many, taken so many votes, limiting and restricting and prohibiting tobacco. That's, and so that's where my heart is at. And here's where my head is at. When I actually take the arguments that the opponents have made here, which have been very good arguments, and then I rebut them in my own head, then no argument does not stand, does not stand up for me. And I'm not done. It just doesn't, and it's, I'm really torn about it. And the reason is, is actually the inconsistency in the way our society treats different substances. In our city, of course, we, it's true, we prohibit flavored tobacco and the selling of other tobacco-type products. We allow cigar lounges, which I think occurred before I got here. So we're inconsistent, and so there's no way to really apply then a consistent standard. And I'm compelled by something that Vice Mayor Maple said, which is that in 2016, the voters of California, right, wrong, or indifferent, and people have obviously different opinions on this, but by a pretty overwhelming majority, said that cannabis should be legal. They even elevated to a constitutional right. And yes, one of the main motivations behind that was to decriminalize it. That's true. But it was also to allow it to be used not just for medicinal purposes but recreationally. And then the city, of course, took the next step, and before I got here, and began the process of regulating and legalizing cannabis. And there are a lot of challenges here, including the taxation and all that. But that's the road that we have taken. And yes, we have positioned some of our significant public policy around youth investments on growing this fund. And so when I think about it, the way that our current law is applied, and I think the thing that maybe convinces me the most is the differentiation between renters and homeowners. How is it that, how is it that people in one type of housing are restricted in many instances from being able to consume a legal product when those who own homes are not? And then you get to this issue of, you know, we know that there's a huge underground economy when it comes to cannabis grows and sales and all, but what about the underground economy around consumption? The fact that people are doing it, as somebody said. And what about the anomaly of a renter who has kids at home being legally allowed to smoke the product but not, for obvious reasons, not wanting to do it in front of their young children? And so I don't really like my position here because it doesn't feel that comfortable to me. But when I think about it intellectually, it's like the only place I can get to, and maybe the first time in my life or career that I will have gone against any of the public health advocates who are fighting for a cleaner and safer city. But I want a condition here. And I'm not going to presuppose what that condition should be, Vice Mayor Maple, because I don't want to do that on the fly. And by the way, the next mayor may have a completely different opinion and want to go yes, no, or otherwise. And so my condition may be meaningless, but for today, in terms of my vote, to move this forward, I would like the intent to be that when the staff brings back the regulatory structure for this, that they include some conditions that allow a council member some ability to call this a particular, a particular application up to the city council. And for there to be some limitation, not the full 40, but some limitation recognizing some of the geographic equity and inequity issues that at least four of my colleagues have raised here today. I'm not going to presuppose what those should be, but that would be the intent of the motion and the intent of what ought to come back. If you're willing to add that to the motion, and the second, I'm willing to vote yes on today's action. Thank you, but I don't want any of that. Thank you. We're all just trying to do our jobs the best that we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Since you so clearly articulated your point, I'm happy to accept that as part of the motion.
I'll accept as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a clarifying question here.
Please.
And this is for the city attorney. Is there, can in the, because this is in ordinance form, can or do you see a real way to add the call-up provision in this motion here now?
way to add the call-up provision in this motion here now, or as you've heard the motion?
As I understand the motion, it's direction to staff to include that when they bring it back with the regulatory aspects. That's, that's the motion, not, we're not adding anything to the ordinance today.
Not today, no, but I do want, but I do want, and again, recognizing new council may change it all, but for this purpose of this motion, the intent is, the record will reflect, that the staff is to bring back some provisions that address the equity in terms of less than forty, that's clear in my, in my amendment, two, that there be some limitations based on geographical equity with under forty, and three, what was three?
Call the application up.
And that there's, and that there be some ability for a member to call the application up. Those are my three, those are my three conditions.
To clarify this, as I understand it, again, because two times is better than one, so we did, in the original motion, we did make a change to the ordinance language regarding some conditions for premises, but now what the motion includes is when you come back to us, because you have to come back after the fee study before you can start charging people to do this, that you would include the provisions that the mayor has named.
Yes, thank you.
And that the future council will decide what that looks like.
I get it. Okay? I think we have a motion, amended motion, and a second, please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tao.
No.
Mayor Protem Talamantes.
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Yes.
Councilmember Gueda.
No.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
No.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. That passes. We still have, we still have more city business here, I would ask everyone to please, if you're not here for the next item, to please leave quietly.
The motion that item passed.
We're going to take three minutes, three minutes. Hi, hi, okay, let's, let's get to the next item relatively quickly, which is the tenant protection ordinance, please. Go ahead, Peter.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, I am Peter Limos, I'm your Code and Housing Enforcement Chief. Today I would like to present on the Tenant Protection and Relief Act and staff's recommendation for minor modifications to the ordinance. On August 13th, 2019, City Council adopted the addition of Chapter 5.156, the Tenant Protection Relief Act. The program was established to assist residential tenants with increased rental rates by establishing set limits on annual rent increases for certain properties and to provide protection from unwarranted lease terminations for long-term tenants, also known as just cause evictions. Following the city's housing element, H25, the, to raise awareness for tenants and landlords of the requirements and rights to afford them, under the program, the city collected data to review the effectiveness of the program. Staff conducted outreach and interviews with interest groups, along with surveys, and will use this data collectively and considering any future changes that would strengthen the effectiveness of our current ordinance. So on October 15th, 2024, the Law and Legislative Committee reviewed the suggested minor modifications to the ordinance and approved bringing the minor modifications of the ordinance to the full council for review and adoption. Staff is recommending, recommending three minor amendments to the current ordinance. These amendments are reflected in the supplemental materials for your today's agenda packet. These are: to define the substantial repairs and to be consistent with the state law; number two, to clarify the requirement to complete an annual registration and pay the annual fee; and number three, to extend the sunset date of the current ordinance of December 31st, 2024, to December 31st of 2029. The five-year extension will allow for the implementation of education programs for tenants and landlords, consistent, consistent methods for data collection and reporting of additional time, consider further amendments to increase the effectiveness of the ordinance. If approved today, the effective date of the ordinance will be December 19th, 2024, before our sunset date, which will change ordinance 5.156150. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, well, this is, obviously we got testimony, go, go.
I have three speakers on this item, Erin Teague, Kaylee Olgerson, and Matt McDonald.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and Council, Erin Teague, on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors. Today we support staff's recommendation to extend the program for five years to collect additional information, collect more data, and provide more education for the tenants and property owners. This new extension allows a local ordinance to align with state law while providing some stability to the current program. We appreciate working with staff to find a balanced approach to continuing this ordinance. Realtors are committed to our ongoing partnership with city staff to provide education for our members on both the tenant protection program and the rental inspection program. As a community, we want to balance tenant protections with the well-being of the housing market. Notably, the survey indicates that most property owners in our city own between one to three properties, underscoring the local nature of these investments and the role in supporting our local economy. Please remember that costs associated with housing, such as property taxes and insurance, continue to rise. It is imperative that we create an environment where our local housing providers can continue to operate. The balanced approach that we have achieved here today is crucial. If the regulatory environment becomes too onerous, capital investment in housing will decline adversely impacting the market. If landlords are unable to afford their property maintenance, they will refrain from investing in their units and surrounding communities. This can lead to a decline in our overall quality of life for all residents. Ultimately, we must continue our efforts to create more housing and create a feasible pathway to homeownership, and we look forward to working together with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kaylee?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. My name is Kaylee Olgerson, and I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Metro Chamber and the business, the member businesses that we represent within the city of Sacramento. We applaud the diligent work of the city and the council on ensuring that there is a robust and balanced tenant protection program in place. We support staff's recommendation to extend the sunset date of the tenant protection program by five years to continue to use generated data for supporting residents and businesses in our growing community. The current program has seen success in allowing additional housing to be built in demand with the growing region, which in turn has been working to stabilize the Sacramento rental market. Additionally, creating an opportunity for educational efforts will be greatly beneficial in aiding the community's understanding of the program for both tenants and landlords. We urge the council to approve the staff's recommendation today, and the Metro Chamber is eager to be a continued partner to ensure the success of the tenant protection program. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to comment today.
Thank you for your comments. Matt McDonald is our final speaker on this item.
Good afternoon, Matt McDonald with the California Apartment Association, representing over 60,000 members statewide and more than 3,000 in the Sacramento area. As we said when TPP came before the Law and Legislation Committee, our preference is that TPP would expire at the end of the year and let the city fall under the common statewide standards set by AB 1482. However, we also recognize the city of Sacramento has invested a great deal of effort and energy into the creation and maintenance of TPP. We also appreciate that a five-year extension aligns with the expiration of AB 1482, and that there will likely be a wholesale reassessment of the state of rental housing leading up to that. If the council does extend TPP for an additional five years, we reiterate the need for additional public education on renters' rights and the gathering of statistically reliable data. We stand by what we said on repeated occasions, that CAA will assist the city in renter education wherever possible. We look forward to working with you to expand education on the issue and work in cooperation with city efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, thank you so much. Turn it over to the members. Councilmember Valenzuela, just went through Law &amp; Ledge, correct?
It did, and happy to see it here today, have a lot more, we'd love to do, but I will take a five-year extension, so move the item.
Moved in second, then Councilmember Gueda, and then Councilmember Tao.
Great, thank you very much. I just wanted to thank staff and all the partners for working on this, and, you know, and for my colleagues on the, on the Law &amp; Ledge Committee for extending it to five years, I think that sets us up in a good position to also be very vocal when the state timeline comes back as well. And I wanted to, also with this motion, a little direction to our staff, I guess, when SHRA comes back and we meet it as a housing authority, I want to bring up the issue of education and renters' education. The 2-1-1 program now is, become our hotline, so, but I know that program is limited, we're throwing a lot on 2-1-1, so I need to, I want to figure out how we do the hotline issue as well. So, if we could add that to our next upcoming issue, and then finally, I appreciate moving this forward because it does provide staff that's been working on, on the TPP some stability. I know the one-year program gives a little bit of hesitance for staff that are there, whether their job's going to be here for another year, but the fact that they were being able out there to go after some really bad landlords and provide some relief and, and stability for the renters in a number of cases, I just want to thank your team, Peter, for going out there, and I'll take up CAA's offer and the Realtors' offer to work on education, both on renters' rights and responsibilities, and also landowners' rights and their responsibilities, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate the support here.
Thank you, of course, Councilmember Tao.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Peter and, you know, Law &amp; Ledge Committee for bringing this forward again, this renewal, just wanted to share a success story of TPP in my district, you know, there was an apartment of sixty rental units, they were all affordable, they lost their affordable designation, they reached out for assistance, I reached out to Matt McDonald also from the Renters Association, Apartments Association, definitely assist with, seeking out with our city attorney and consulting with Peter and going out there and being able to save these rental units and these tenants from being evicted. There was sixty units from marginalized Southeast Asian refugee community who did not know that our TPP program existed, did not know where to reach out for help, and their rents spiked up almost 180%, and definitely, this is why we need this ordinance, we need this extension, especially echoing the education part, so that our community understands that we need more education out there, that there are rental protection rights that the city has adopted, and it does go in their favor so that they know how to seek assistance when that's needed, and so I would just like to throw that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, this one probably deserves a lot more time, because it's really that important, and, you know, there's a lot that went into it, and I know, an effort to push farther, and, yet I think this has worked well and needs to be, needs to be extended, absolutely. We appreciate the support of the industry and, and everybody else, all right? Let's go. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that measure passes, and that concludes our afternoon agenda. Do we have, can we, do we have public testimony on the agenda?
Mayor, this is a special meeting, so we don't have the opportunity for matters on the agenda.
We do not, okay, special it is. We will take a 15-minute break and come maybe five, a little after five, for a lengthy evening agenda. Thank you, word adjourned.